Yes, welcome everyone. You are in the right place if you are coming and choosing to attend the BUSD School Board Meeting for this evening, November 5th. We are just waiting for all of our directors to make their way into the virtual room and get the meeting set up and we will be beginning shortly. Thank you so much. Again, good evening, everyone. You are in the right place if you are intending to attend the BUSD Board Meeting for today, November 5th. Again, we are asking for your grace and your patience as we move ourselves into this virtual space and prepare to begin the meeting. We will also make sure to include instructions on how you can let us know that you want to do public comments and other ways that you can engage in this virtual format. And thanks again for everyone for being flexible and willing to, willing and able to pivot with such short notice.
Hello, thanks everyone for joining. I'm seeing and thank you Superintendent Ford Morthell for checking with everybody and ensuring that everyone knows that we're on the right site. Thanks for shifting, pivoting as Superintendent Ford Morthell noted at fairly late notice to join us. I think we have Quorum and all of our board directors, at least they're checked into the Zoom meeting. And when they want to, can feel appropriate, they can jump onto the video as appropriate. Okay, so it is 7:10 and I'm going to call the board meeting back in into public meeting from having come from closed meeting. So it's November 5th, 2025, meeting of the school board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, it's posted on the district website. Please, just a reminder of decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. I know everyone behaves generally speaking. We much appreciate that. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating, or participating in a physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public or approaching the dais without permission. Of course, there's no dais today, but you know, we apply this to our online context. This is all in line with bylaw 9323 and meeting conduct. If you have a complaint regarding a specific employee, we encourage you to use the district complaint process via complaints@berkeley.net as opposed to public comment to address these matters. We will now approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
President Chang, we should call the roll.
Oh, I apologize. Seen the jump over that. Let's call the roll.
Of course, Director Anavasdev.
Presentant.
Director Jennifer Shonaski.
Here.
Student Director Coria Colson will be joining us shortly. Director Vice President Jen Korn.
President.
And President Mike Chang.
Up here to be here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. And then is there a motion to approve the agenda? I think there may be a question about this. Is there an item that needs to be pulled? Not today. Okay.
I think we, if you're referring to me, I think I pull it when the item comes up. So I moved to approve the agenda.
Okay, good. Just want to double check. There's a motion to approve with Director Shonaski as a second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, Director Vasudev beat you to it. She's seconded it. Thank you. How about the eyes?
President Chang, since we are virtual, we will need to call the roll for each vote this evening.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Absolutely. Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Shonaski.
Yes.
Vice President Korn.
Yes.
President Chang.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chavez. We have a report out on our closed session. If Vice President Korn would proceed with that.
Yes, just a moment. In, let's see, closed session was called to order at 5:57 PM with Chang Korn, Shonaski, and Vasudev in attendance. For item 4.1.1, there was a motion by Shonaski, seconded by Vasudev, and the motion was passed unanimously. For item 4.1.2, there was a motion by Vasudev, seconded by Korn, and it was also passed unanimously. And for item 4.2, the board received an update from staff and gave some direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice President Korn. Next on up, the superintendent's comments. Superintendent Ford Morthell, please proceed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Chang, and good evening, BUSD family. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge that tonight's meeting was shifted to a virtual format due to an unforeseen emergency. I want to appreciate everyone's flexibility and understanding as we made this adjustment, as we are making this adjustment in real time. While the format has changed, our commitment to transparency, public participation, and the important work before us remains the same. And so I thank our board directors, our staff, and you, our community, for adapting quickly so that we can continue to work together without interruption. And we have several important topics before us this evening. One of the key discussion items will be an update on federal program monitoring for physical education. Staff will be sharing critical updates on the findings, the steps the district has already taken, and what comes next as we work to ensure full compliance. The presentation will also outline key considerations as we prepare for this shift, particularly around staffing, budget, master scheduling, and facilities, all with a continued focus on equity and student access. Immediately following that discussion, the board will hear and take action on a facilities update related to the Berkeley High School C and E project. Staff will connect this item to the earlier PE discussion, so please stick around, and they'll also share what we've learned through planning and engagement to date. This project has been reviewed by the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and now comes to the board this evening for approval. I should also note that we've received several emails and comments and questions regarding the district's cellphone policy for this evening. And I want to take the time to clarify that while there are several policies on tonight's agenda for either first read or second read, the cellphone policy is not one of them. This is a really important topic, we know, and it's one that's top of mind for many of you and something that the community as a whole cares deeply about. And so to ensure that it receives the full attention and discussion that it deserves, the cellphone policy will be presented as its own item at the next board meeting on November the 15th. At that meeting, staff will share a detailed presentation and community members will have an opportunity to provide public comment and hear as the board engages in discussion over the policy and the idea of cellphones in our schools in general. That meeting will be just another opportunity to engage in this timely topic and will also be a time for the community to hear about additional opportunities for engagement as this work continues. And so I want to reiterate again, the cellphone policy is not on tonight's agenda. We will have a presentation and discussion at the next meeting on November 15th. Finally, I want to thank everyone once again for the quick pivot to a virtual format. We typically hold hybrid meetings and haven't been fully virtual as we are now for quite some time, a couple of years actually. And so I am going to appreciate in advance your grace and your patience as we reacquaint ourselves to all that this special all-virtual format entails. As I mentioned earlier, it is important for us that we continue this work. We know it's important for you that this important work that we're doing continues. And again, we know we have some hot topics tonight, so we did not at all want to cancel the meeting. And so we switched to virtual. I usually, when I'm in person, make a plea for our in-person attendees to stay with us until the end. And tonight, that expectation is even stronger since you're already in a comfort, in the comfort of your own home or another place of convenience. That means I'm looking at the numbers of participants and I expect that number to stay the same or grow as this night progresses. The topics before us this evening again are meaningful and timely, and I hope that you stay logged in and tuned in because I believe that in Berkeley, community connection doesn't depend on our location. So we are remote tonight, but we are in for some great and robust conversations with board and with staff. So welcome and thank you, President Chang, for the time.
Good. Thank you so much. And we'll now move on to public comments. That component of our agenda, there are two opportunities, real comments at each meeting now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You may also email us to boardofed@berkeley.net. If you have complaints against specific district employees, again, we encourage you to use the district complaint process, complaints@berkeley.net as opposed to public comment. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. Board members, the superintendent, the staff do not take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. They do take notes. I apologize. This is an online meeting, so today is a little bit different than our normal hybrid meetings. We're going to, we're going to navigate through this. We've done it before. It's been a while, though. It may be a little rusty. We have public commenters perhaps online. And I think we're going to do what? How many public commenters we have today? I'm going to check to see in terms of time. Normally it's two minutes. Folks raise their hands. 19? Is that 19 people?
Eighteen. We're up to 20.
Keeps changing. It's like 19, 20, 21, 22. Looks like there's 22 speakers. So Ms. Chavez, as someone with a lot of experience, how many do you think? One minute or two minutes? I'm just looking at our time.
accommodate the 30 minutes, accommodate them all during the 30-minute period. I think we should do one minute.
Yeah, that's a good call. We do want to keep on time and there are folks who need to go to bed, have jobs, and also have kids that have got to go to school. Okay, let's do a minute. Of course, just remember all the decorum stuff I told you about earlier. So I'm going to call two names at one time and then you will know when you're coming up next. I think you can kind of see from the the attendees list here, but it looks like first, are there any students, first of all, on this list?
We have a student request to come after the translation. We have a translation request. We should go with that first and be followed by the student at the student's request.
We have a translation request first. Okay.
So Lupe Gallegos, I will be promoting you and then you can use her one minute and I will follow with the translation.
Okay, I see. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. Can Lupe Gallegos go first then?
Yes, I'm promoting Lupe now.
Cool. And then after that, I think is join us, La Maderie Brunel.
We have student Liza.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Do I go now? Okay, so buenas noches. Good evening to the Board President Chang and the Board of Directors and Superintendent. Thank you. I'm actually coming on today as Lupe Gallegos Diaz, co-chair to Latinos Unidos de Berkeley and a resident since 1984. I just wanted to come tonight to both to thank our superintendent and Jill, who have been very good in partnering with Latinos Unidos for a long time, and I wanted to continue to thank you for that and also look forward to engaging more as I know we've been in difficult times right now that in the new year, hopefully by the end of the year, to keep, to engage with the school board on how to better support Latino immigrant families and of course, our undocumented students and our families in these particular times, particularly with tonight, the issue of language access and also translation to be sure not only to provide, but to our communities to understand as these are difficult times and we definitely need to have various languages. I'm also reaching out to also schedule regular meetings in the new academic year for the new year, especially as we approach budget times because I know things are going to get harder. And then finally, I really want to thank our Director Vasudev and Director Korn for their continued advocacy with our immigrant and our undocumented community and their participation in the city sanctuary task force. So I wanted to come tonight just to, again, thank for, thank you all for the relationships and that I hope we continue them particularly with the budgets having a timely, knowing that things are coming down hard and choices have to be made, but that to be sure that our immigrant and our Latino community and undocumented are well represented within our communities. So just wanted to thank you and continued our partnership. So that is my statement for tonight.
Thank you so much, Lupe. And next on up, I believe we have a student, Ms. Chavez.
Yes, Marina Cruz. Apologies. Marina Cruz is who requested translation. Marina, if you are online, please raise your virtual hand so we can get you on. In the meantime, we can promote the student if the student is ready. Liza.
Marina Cruz, are you ready to come online? Thank you so much. You're going to be promoted as a panelist.
I don't see Marina Cruz online.
Maybe she, she was on, then no longer.
She may be under a different name. We can try the student in the meantime while.
Okay, so we have, I do see, there's a bunch of students. There's Liza, there is further down the line. We also have, just to be aware, a number of others. Max and Leo Hesterman.
Some.
Yeah, Liza, please. Thank you. Liza and the Hestermans. So the Hestermans, if you could be ready after Liza.
Hi, sorry. I'm here with my student. She's going to make a comment and then I have a second comment, so I'm going to each.
So Ms. Chavez, what do you think? You does?
There's one minute. Yeah, they have to split the one in between.
No, that's not right. Sorry. No, we're two separate people.
You specifying something different than?
Totally different comment, different item.
Okay, so this is how we do it. Because she's a student, she goes first, and then we go to the Hestermans. Then make sure you're back online and you'll get your time, your one minute separately too.
You got it. Yeah, here she is.
Hi, my name is Thea. I'm an eighth grader at Longfellow and I'm also on the youth commission, but I'm speaking as an individual. I learned yesterday that the requirements are going to be different for like my class, and I just want to make sure that we have like the PE requirements. And I just want to make sure that we have the same opportunities for like electives as other classes, especially for students like me who are part of the TWI program and the music program. So I just want to make sure that we'll have the same like opportunities to take those electives because of the PE requirements.
Great. Thank you, Liza. And Liza's mom, please make sure you can be, get back onto the hand raised list, so you'll get your one minute. Cool, thank you. And then we have the, I think of the Hestermans who are our students. Max and Leo. You guys ready? And after Max and Leo, I don't see any other students. I don't see any noted as students. 22 people.
I'm sorry, President Chang, I don't see their hand raised.
Oh.
They did indicate that they're students, but we can promote them to see if they want to speak.
Their hand is raised on my participant.
Oh, I see it now. I see it now. Okay.
Max and Leo, come on up. Ready? You can be upgraded to panelist. There you are. Yep. Hi there. We can hear you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, my name is Max. I'm a junior at Berkeley High. I've been on boys tennis for two years and we've, we've been practicing at Hearst Courts, but since they were torn down last summer. There's a bit of a question. So we're, yeah, we're kind of worried about not having a consistent place to practice. There's a lot of commuting already with Hearst. We're kind of worried about bouncing around between the week. It might be a hard adjustment for younger players.
And I'm Leo. I'm a freshman and I'm hoping to try out going into this fall. And you know, I've seen how hard it is for like my brother and all the other players on the team to actually go through this process of just getting to the courts. It's really difficult. I think it would really help if we had a court that was, you know, permanent and also kind of close to home.
Yeah, it's, tennis is kind of strange because you know, most other Berkeley athletic programs, you know, do have facilities near campus or on campus, but with tennis, it's a bit atomized. The rest, you know, we don't really feel, we don't even feel like we're representing or are represented by school or at school. And you know, it'd be, it'd be nice, especially for their players to kind of have more spirit about that sort of thing.
So we're asking, we're asking the district to prioritize a permanent site at Mooreing. It's close and has a lot of space, so it would be quick and I could, I could probably play on the course before I graduate 2029.
Yeah, that's, that's all we had. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And so we have so Liza's mom, what did have her hands up? I'm trying to figure out where to put her in the line because she kind of fell out of line.
President Chang, sorry to interrupt. Liza is the mom.
Eliza is the mom.
She's back only as an attendee, so she can raise her hand now as her virtual hand to speak.
Okay, please, Liza, please raise your hand and sorry, they kind of pushed you down, but you'll get your minute. I don't see any other students here. Just making sure we respect.
President Chang, there's another student in the chat. Her name is Maya.
Okay, so she's in the chat, but she, she's not in the attendance list. Thanks for flagging that. Okay, Maya.
Does. It says student Maya.
A student Maya. Do you see student Maya, Ms. Chavez?
We can, Maya promoting Maya now.
Okay, promoting Maya now. Maya, do you? Are you ready? Lost her for a second there.
Yeah, I don't see Maya anymore.
She might have accidentally disconnected. Let's.
Yeah, I feel free to reconnect and raise your virtual hand so we can get you.
Yeah, is it, was it Maya D? Because she's in the participants list still. Just not as a student. Maya D, do you want it? She has her hand raised. Can you? So Ms. Chavez, there is a Maya D in the participants list. Wondering if that's the same person.
Maya's rejoining now as a panelist.
Thanks.
Hi there, you're muted. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I think that was like my mom's computer. I am on the Berkeley High tennis team and I have been for four years and I just wanted to touch on the same topic. Like they said, it's, it's been like a lot of transportation to courts, but basically I understand there is a simpler plan for tennis courts at Mooreing and I just wanted to give my support because I think that sounds like a great solution and it really would just be amazing to have courts that are accessible and especially if that can get done in a sooner timeline. That would be great. So yeah, I just wanted to give my support for the plan and yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Maya. So I don't see any other students. Can you guys flag for me if you see anyone else in the chat or otherwise? I don't seem to see anybody.
No, but Marina, who needs translation?
Joining us as the panelists now.
Hi.
Gracias, Marina. Translating Marina's comments. Thank you, BUSD, for considering today on your agenda funding the translation and interpretation services for district meetings and agenda item 13.4. We are here to ask the board to support this request for translation and interpretation services with Worldly and to make sure to use the service for district-wide meetings and school board meetings. As many of you know, immigrant communities are under attack by the current presidential administration. Berkeley's Latino community even had to cancel our Dia de los Muertos celebrations due to community fears of ICE. Right now, more than ever, our immigrant families need support in our schools and need to understand how their children are both educated and protected in Berkeley schools. Translation and interpretation of board materials and meetings have been a longstanding ask of Latinos Unidos at Berkeley since it's hard for parents to understand board meetings and, and understand important decisions impacting our children's educations. We, the Latino Unidos at Berkeley, agree with the Worldly AI interpretation services and we hope BUSD, BUSD should invest in this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marina. Do we have any other students here or folks who are in need of interpretation? Don't see any. Student Maya is still on the participants list, but she's already chatted. The Hestermans are on there too. You can lower your hands, Hestermans and Maya, please.
President Chang, Olga Calderon.
Well, thank you so much, Vice President. Olga Calderon needs, has a request for interpretation. Can you elevate her, please, Ms. Chavez?
Yes, promoting her now.
Great. So we do a timer for one minute if possible. Try to keep within those bounds.
Your prayer to be able to translate it as best as possible, okay?
tu oración para poder traducir este lo más este mejor posible, okay? Ya puedes hablar.
And in the meantime, as Olga's coming on board, um, there's a request that, um, there, some folks are having trouble apparently with the settings, they can't see the panelists, they can't see all the board members. Not sure if there's a setting issue or.
Yeah, I'll, I'll change the gallery view.
Olga, cuando estés, cuando estés lista, ya puedes empezar.
Estoy, déjame ver el video. No sé si no puedo habilitar mi video.
Te podemos escuchar.
Okay. Hola, buenas noches a todos los miembros, um, y al superintendente. Um, primero que nada agradecer todo el gran trabajo que han hecho. Mi nombre es Olga Calderón, tengo dos hijas en Berkeley High School y vengo a decir que estamos de acuerdo con la inversión en los servicios de interpretación de Worldly AI para el distrito. En las reuniones del distrito escolar, um, normalmente se presenta bastante información que no es accesible a nuestra comunidad debido a la barrera de idioma. Entonces esperamos que este contrato, uh, presente, uh, los servicios de traducción y sea más posible para nuestras familias en, uh, que entiendan y participen más activas en estas reuniones para que su voz sea escuchada. También esperamos que, um, las reuniones sean más accesibles de los, desde los hogares y lo puedan entender, entender en su idioma. Um, al mismo tiempo sabemos que esta es una inversión, pero por muy pequeña que sea, se, sabemos que, que generará un gran impacto y ya que deseamos que todos uh, los participantes que de momento el idioma es una barrera, se, se conviertan en personas más activas en las decisiones de la educación de sus hijos. Muchos otros distritos en todo el estado ya ofrecen esa interpretación durante las reuniones, entonces esperamos tener ese mismo nivel o mucho mejor. De nuevo, muchas gracias y estamos de acuerdo con estas inversiones de interpretación Worldly AI para el distrito. Gracias.
Gracias, Olga. Olga is a parent in BUSD and she, uh, is commenting in support of the Worldly translation services. She feels that this is a small investment that will help impact greatly, will have a great impact and allow families who are need translation to be more engaged and participate in board meetings and be more informed about what's going on. Um, so she is in support and she is hoping that the board votes in favor of, of this resource. Gracias, Olga.
Ms. Chavez, I just wanted to add another thing that she said there. I might have missed was, uh, the importance of allowing families to participate remotely.
Which are also part of the comments.
Thank you so much. Um, next on up, let's see, do we have any more? Uh, looking in the list here, any more requests for interpretation or a new student has popped up? And then we want to make sure to take care of those. We, we want to move through this list. There's, there's a good number of attendees today. We got eighteen. Want to give you your time and also move on to the meeting as well, meeting content. Uh, I don't see any other students or the folks requesting interpretation. If, if anyone else uh, sees so, please let me know. So we have a, a, Jonas, uh, Lamaterie Brunel, these are a set of folks, um, uh, from the union who'd like to speak. There's also, uh, Ms. Padilla, Krasnor, Carrie O'Connor, Patton. In addition to Lamaterie Brunel, Sarah Carver also would like to speak on behalf of the union, but, um, uh, what's the, uh, Ms. Chavez in an online context? What is the best way to go about? The group given a minute each?
Yes, as of now, um, Liza is our last speaker for the evening and we will end there and anyone else who wishes to join after can do public comment at the second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's go that way. So Jonas, um, will go first, then next we have Adabel Padilla.
Do you hear me?
Yep.
I, Jonas Lametri Brunel, work as the district's part-time only Harok Hospital teacher since twenty twelve, serving the learning needs of psychiatric hospitalized adolescents. BUSD relies on part-time educators like myself. Part-timers like me who do not get health insurance through a partner often cannot afford the very high premiums for employer-based health insurance in this district. Shall we pay possibly affordable premiums for much poorer quality health insurance through ACA covered California or forego health insurance? For years I've paid for a covered California plan I can just afford, but last year the premiums rose eleven percent while my BUSD pay rose two percent. Then in May I got COVID from my BUSD work. Hospitalized for four days, I emerged with nine grand of medical debt, a third of my financial net worth. Increase the hard cap and pay substantially so educators can afford to keep working here and meet our health and financial basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thanks so much. Next on up, we have Adabel Padilla. And then after that, Carrie O'Connor.
Good evening. My name is Adabel Padilla Cunningham and I've served as a bilingual school psychologist in Berkeley for thirteen years. I serve preschool, non-public schools and legal cases. I'm also a newly single mom of two young girls after my husband's recent passing. Even while on leave, I felt compelled to be here because students' needs don't pause. We carry their stories, their family's hopes and the responsibility to help every child gain independence, their most fundamental right. Our work takes deep expertise in psychology, education and law. Many veteran psychs have pursued advanced credentials and specialized training, often at their own expense to better serve students and mentor colleagues, bringing consistency and depth that keep programs strong. Across twelve nearby districts, the average number of salary steps is seventeen. Berkeley has twelve and many of our most experienced psychologists have already reached the ceiling. We stay because Berkeley is special. Its diversity and values reflect our own. These are difficult to fill positions and our salaries need to be competitive with nearby districts. Please support additional salary steps so we can continue serving students with the same dedication and heart that define this district. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Um, next up we have Carrie O'Connor. And then after that will be Daniel Krasner.
Hi, my name's Carrie O'Connor. I'm a school psychologist supporting Rosa Parks and BTA BIS. I'm here to speak on behalf of my fellow school psychologists. We are asking the district to agree to at least a five hundred students to one school psychologist for site-based school psychologist ratios. Maintaining a one to five hundred ratio of students to school psychologists is essential to providing comprehensive, high-quality services for our students. The ratio allows school psychologists to focus on prevention, early intervention and ongoing support rather than being stretched too thin. With manageable caseloads, we can provide in-house counseling, build strong relationships with students, teachers and families and complete thorough, meaningful assessments that guide instruction and intervention. By keeping counseling services within our district, we ensure that support is timely, personalized and connected to the community. When we moved to this model, the district saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in services that were being contracted out. The one to five hundred NASP recommended ratio is not just a staffing goal, it's a research-based investment in student well-being, educator collaboration and the sustainability of our support systems. The good news is that this proposal is cost neutral as it's how we are currently staffed. We want to make sure that we can maintain this level of staffing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Next on up with Daniel Krasner and that, that, that would be Subrato, Subrato's iPhone. Daniel, you're, you're, there you are.
Hello. Every month, I brace myself for the inevitable. My rent, utilities and debt will cause me to avoid living a normal, healthy life. Because I can't afford to go to the doctor, fix my car, take my dog to the vet or make plans for my future. I have been teaching for thirteen years and also went to Berkeley schools. But I can't live an adult lifestyle in the area where I teach. The district needs to contribute much more to health benefits. I can't afford to replace my broken glasses, go to the dentist or get regular healthcare. I am also urging the district for salary increase. I can't afford to visit my mother and also pay for groceries. I shouldn't have to leave work and rush off to the food bank so that I can figure out something for dinner. I shouldn't have to decide between eating or being able to get to work. Salary increase and better health coverage be core considerations because they are investments supporting much-needed teachers to serve students in our teachers, our Berkeley schools. As a former Berkeley student, I know the value of teachers who stay in the community and build valuable relationships. However, if our pay and benefits continue to be substantially lower than other districts, we will lose great educators and in the long run, more families as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Daniel. Um, next up is Subrato's iPhone and then after that would be Erica. Bratto's coming on board. We got a minute per person. Thank you so much.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, hi. Very good evening. Am I audible?
Yep, you're audible.
Hello, thank you. Thank you, respected president, uh, board members. Very honored to feel, uh, you giving me the opportunity to speak today. So I am Subrato Mukherjee. I am, uh, the AP Physics C teacher for senior classes and I am also taking multilingual science programs for a diverse set of students from across three continents, eight different countries and, and so on. So my AP Physics C students are probably some of the brightest in the area, if not the very brightest. But one of the problems I wanted to highlight today is the false alarm system. So far I reckon because of like around twelve to fifteen false alarms, uh, in, in the, like mostly occurring during the morning hours, we have probably lost around five to seven hours of teaching time. So most of the alarms were proven to be false or because of faulty alarm system and so on. So I would request, uh, your honor to kindly look at the problem because this is very expensive in terms of our learning time. If we look at the three thousand student base, uh, losing five to seven hours means we have lost fifteen thousand to twenty thousand person hours of learning time, which is like very, really costly in terms of the learning process. Being in the heart of Silicon Valley technology is not an issue. Some of my students are actually doing carbon nanotube, uh, sensor-based research. So it's a very well, uh, like, uh, maintainable, uh, program. We can do it. So I request you to kindly pay attention to this. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, Subrato. Uh, ran a little bit over it. Next on up is Erica and then Peter Wright. Hello, Erica.
Yeah. Uh, I can hear me?
Yep, Erica.
All right. It shows up as Erica, but, uh, my name is actually Manu Said. Uh, Erica is my wife. Uh, my name is Manu and I have two kids at Malcolm X. Uh, Director Cleese will be presenting updated Berkeley High capacity and expansion proposals this evening. We want to thank the facilities department for listening to community concerns about both the design and the engagement process. Outreach to BTEC and the wider range of options being considered represents progress to a more inclusive approach to meeting student needs. As BUSD moves forward with these studies, I have a specific request. I asked that BUSD study the alternative of placing tennis courts on top of the proposed classroom and parking facility at Millview rather than at Mollering Field. It's critical that BUSD take this opportunity to explore all viable options rather than pushing to a decision that may not represent the best use of bond funds or the best long-term outcome for tennis and other, uh, BHS athletic programs. No decision to construct tennis courts at Mollering with Measure G funds should be made before fully evaluating this option. This option has some significant, uh, advantages. It would be consistent with the text of Measure G, which proposed placing tennis courts on top of parking at Millvia. Uh, this would allow the tennis courts to also be located directly across the street from Berkeley High, providing convenient access for BUSD players and families. This option would also preserve the multipurpose field at Mollering Field, which is used for all manner of community and BUSD sports. Uh, we hope that BUSD remains committed to strong community engagement and takes our concerns and our ideas seriously. We look forward to continuing to work together toward a solution that meets the needs of all stakeholders.
Thank you so much. Um, next on up is Peter Wright and after that is Keynote. Peter, you pulling on up there? Hello? You, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hello, school lord. Uh, my name is Peter Wright and I'm here tonight seeking your support to rebuild the Berkeley High School tennis courts that have been missing for twenty-five years. Do you play tennis? Study after study after study shows that playing tennis extends your life and is one of the healthiest activities we can do for our physical and mental health from youth to old age. Maybe we should just stop this meeting and go play tennis now. Or maybe we should finally vote to restore the Berkeley High School tennis courts for our kids. The time is right. It's been over twenty-five years since tennis courts were replaced by parking? Uh, the, the location is right. A short walk from BHS and space for five courts. The price is right. The United States Tennis Association oversees all tennis in the USA and with the profits from the US Open, they help school districts like ours across the country build new tennis courts. And they're especially excited to help establish new courts at Berkeley High School, one of the largest public high schools in America without tennis courts. Please, please vote to build these long-awaited tennis courts so we can take one big healthy step forward for our kids today and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, next on up is Keynote and then Tom.
Good evening, board members. Also, good evening, fellow educators, students and parents. My name is Kaata Patton. I'm speaking on behalf of BFT and also Longfellow Middle School. Four years ago, when I called my dad and told him I was offered a job at Longfellow, he said, baby, this is the best job on the planet. Working at BUSD changed my life and you couldn't have landed in a better place. But safe to say that he wasn't right, but he wasn't wrong. While this job has been one of the most rewarding experiences in my life, my dad forgot to mention the sacrifices I would have to make to hold up my end of the bargain. He forgot to mention all the hours that I would have to work outside of my contracted schedule to fulfill my agreement. Hours and hours and hours and hours of grading papers with no compensation. I stand here to urge Berkeley School Board members to review the compensation of the comparative districts and see how Berkeley ranks from dead last to below average. My dad sure forgot to mention that when I looked at my paycheck after taxes, I'd be left with the crust of the bread and barely enough to pay or cover my basic needs, rent, food, clothing, health, transportation. So we need to have a higher compensation. It's a bigger issue when taken into account out-of-pocket healthcare costs, which reduce actual disposable income. The district says that we are invested in equity, that our work should be student-centered. But I ask that the teachers are added to this equation. We barely make ends meet. We spend hours on our feet and many of us work through lunch and we don't eat. So I do put my students at the center and I ask that the district allow teachers to be above average so we could be sure to stay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Keynote. Um, next on up is Tom and then Matt J.
Um, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello, Tom. Ready for you.
There we go.
There you are.
Hello, I'm Tom Lent, Berkeley resident and father in Berkeley High alum. My comments are in regards to agenda item fifteen, the approval of Measure G program updates specifically to Berkeley High School capacity and expansion project. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, but frankly, I have to admit, I'm pretty shocked and deeply disappointed to see the school district bringing back a proposal to build a new parking deck in downtown Berkeley after this was subcurrently investigated, publicly discussed and properly. proposal to build a new parking deck in downtown Berkeley after this was subcurrently investigated, publicly discussed and properly rejected two years ago. With all due respect, this proposal is an insult to the students, teachers and us community supporters who work hard to develop our climate literacy initiative and are trying to learn about and address the climate impact of transportation in Berkeley. Critically, it's also a huge waste of taxpayer dollars and the school district resources to build a new parking deck within a few blocks of empty parking decks that taxpayers are already paying for. And where the needed parking could be obtained at a fraction of the cost with far greater flexibility to adjust the changing demand in the future. I strongly encourage the board not to approve this proposal, but instead direct the school district to go back to work with the city collaboratively find solutions to use what we have already built. This problem can be solved without more concrete. Also, please direct the staff to do a robust transportation demand management plan to help teachers use alternatives. We need a much richer survey than previously done and assessment of whole full suite of options. The offers we made two years ago have not expired. There are many of us in the community standing by, ready to volunteer resources to make this work. Don't waste those precious bond resources and that valuable land on redundant car storage. Prioritize that money and space to use as that actually help our students learn. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Um, next on up, uh, we have Rach Lee and then Leo Legg after Rach.
Apologies, President Chengai promoted Mad Jay, um, who was supposed to go. He disappeared from the attendee list because he's already on as a panelist.
So man and then Rach.
Copy.
Hello, thank you all, uh, board members and superintendent Ford. Uh, I've got a first grader at Cragmont. I came in August uh and spoke about buses being canceled in the hills. We're nearly three months into the school year and we've really received no progress on this issue. In early September, we were promised an engagement session with Superintendent Ford would be scheduled, um, which we were very excited about and nothing has come of that. We were told that the main concern, the main reason for canceling buses in the hills was safety concerns along Grizzly Peak with a very specific list of concerns that allegedly came from CHP. And yet CPRA requests that we file with both BUSD and CHP turned up nothing related to Grizzly Peak's safety. And CHP told Berkeley side in an article that uh this was entirely BUSD's decision. Uh, furthermore, we see buses traveling on Grizzly Peak every day. There's a short bus that serves my neighborhood. I believe that's for a student with a special accommodation. There's also a longer bus that we see regularly, which I believe is a Longfellow bus. Um, and so if it's a safety concern, we're either putting them at risk or it's not really a concern. Um, if it is, let's rent some passenger vans. That's a solvable problem. If it's a budget concern, let's say that. And we've had multiple parents tell you that we're willing to engage on anything up to and including a ballot initiative to make this right so that we can guarantee busing. We have busing, like we have school choice here in Berkeley, but we don't have the buses to actually accommodate it and make it work. Um, we're willing to engage. We really are. We want to help solve this problem. But we do need transparency about what the actual barriers are and actual engagement. Uh, it's not working for us. We haven't forgotten about it. We, uh, there's dozens of families on a WhatsApp group that talk about this every day and try to coordinate and help each other out. But that's not what it should take to be able to get our kids to and from school safely and on time. Uh, so we really would appreciate that engagement session. Uh, and you've got a lot of motivated parents who I think would be willing to to step up to the plate. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Um, next on up Rach Lee and then after that Leo Leg. Hello, Rach, you're on now. You're a panelist, so you can, there you go. Hi there.
Okay, here I am. Hi, everybody. Um, good evening. My name is Rachy. Um, and I'm a parent in BUSD. First, I want to share my support for the Berkeley High tennis team. Um, it is their tennis courts near or on campus is way overdue. We started talking about this issue when my kids were in elementary. One is in high school now. Um, and they're not going to be the first generation of students who graduate without these tennis courts. So let's make this happen. Um, I'm also here um to talk about California's law, AB thirty uh thirty-two sixteen, which makes clear that school districts must engage the community, which includes students, educators and parents when developing policies around its mobile device use in schools. Now, there's a couple of ways to do it, but just having public comment is not enough. So while I'm excited to hear that it's on the agenda for November fifteen, just making public comment available is not enough. It's not the type of significant stakeholder engagement the law requires. Another approach is to issue public forums and issue surveys. And so that's more than public comment. Um, but the kind of the problem with that is that it can surface a lot of fears and hypotheticals. That's not grounded in kind of the reality of the day to day. Um, and so I urge the district um in the school board to consider another approach, um, which Baltimore City Public Schools as well as other districts has have done, which is to pilot a few smartphone policies on its various campuses in real school settings, then gather data and feedback from those experiences before adopting a district wide policy. That way, decisions are grounded in evidence and lived experience, not just opinions and hypotheticals. Um, and we look forward as parents in the community and working with the district to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo Leg, Leg next and Maxim Lofe, Maxim Loth. Let's see, Maxim, I don't see Leo. Do we have Leo Leg though? I'm sorry, Maxim. We just want to double check in terms of order. Um, Leo Leg is supposed to go in front of you. We just want to make sure he's had the opportunity. It's Charlie.
Promoting Leo now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure. And then Maxim, you'll go after Leo, okay? Leo, you're on board now. You can unmute and come on to the video. There you are. I think your camera's on, but it may block. There you go. Okay, good.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm actually Douglas Leg. Uh, Leo is my son, um, and a um student at Berkeley High School. I'm um here to speak about the resurfacing of the proposed parking garage on the Millvia parcel across from the high school. Um, I um spoke extensively about this three years ago and and like Tom who spoke earlier um had believed that this issue had been resolved. Um, so it's very disappointing to see it resurfacing as um as a going proposal. Uh, I spent twenty seven years working for the city and county of San Francisco, recently retired as the uh as a deputy city administrator over assets and infrastructure, including capital planning. Um, and had spent years working at Public Works. It makes no sense for the school district to be spending these bond dollars on a parking structure that um is duplicative of parking that's available nearby. Um, and is going to cost millions and millions of dollars. The proposal today you will probably hear is only to spend money on design. Um, but design costs are three to ten percent of the total project cost. Uh, the estimated cost of the parking garage three years ago was twenty seven million dollars. Um, construction cost escalation is huge right now. And so just spending money on this design work is probably going to cost the district between one and four million dollars. And that's, and that's to get something that is not going to be of any particular use to the students. Um, the families or the community. And um, so I urge you um to eliminate that part of the proposal on the expansion, expansion part, part of the bond proposal. Thank you very much.
You want to try to keep within a minute. I know it's short. Um, everybody tried to uh mark your time.
I have my timer on, but I fear it might not be loud enough. So I'm happy to audibly just state, you know, time's up for folks who are speaking.
Yeah, I think I do so because we do have a lot of speakers. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. And uh, you know, we thanks for uh, we appreciate the public comment and you know, minute does uh seem rather short, but it's so uh, so everyone has that time. Maxim, would you like to go next?
Yes.
Okay, want to proceed?
All right. Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Maxim Yoffi. I'm a parent of a BUAS student who is receiving reduced bus service from the school district. Uh, my son Alex was assigned in elementary school that's far from our house. And so he qualifies for the school bus service. However, there isn't a bus stop within walking distance, so we have to drive Alex to the bus stop. This has proved to be a significant hardship for us. And I know as Matt had mentioned, there are many other families from our neighborhood in the hills that are in the same boat. I'm here to reiterate our request to the school district to fix this inequitable situation. I noticed that mostly kids in all the other neighborhoods live within a few blocks of their bus stop, and this is discriminatory to the BUSD families in our neighborhood. It's been a few months now with no progress, not even a meeting between the parents in the district to brainstorm solutions. Uh, I'm asking the district to please work with us to come up with a solution as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on up Ben Gerhardstein, Walkbike Berkeley, and then after the Daniel Bronson.
Uh, good evening, board. I didn't think I was going to get a chance to speak, so good to uh have the opportunity. I really just want to underscore what both Douglas and Tom have already said about the um proposal to reengage with a potential parking garage in Millvia uh for Berkeley High. There, we really thought that we'd put this um this idea to rest a couple of years ago, and it's confusing, frustrating and disappointing to see it resurface. Um, so we urge the board tonight to not include any design or consideration of a parking garage in item fifteen, if you approve that expansion project. And let's table this. If we have to have more conversation around it, we're happy to do that. Uh, but we really need to think creatively and not not um move through with the goal of uh building a very expensive um parking garage on the taxpayer dime. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on up is Daniel Bronson. And then after Daniel is Evan. Daniel, you're going to be elevated now to chat. Hey, Daniel, you're on board now.
Okay, um.
Come on video.
Oh, I, my computer's been acting really slow. It's better.
Got it.
Uh, if uh.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyway, you know what I look like anyway. Um, so, um, I was told in negotiations that the district's broke, district is broke, but what am I, what am I hearing about a a new parking garage? That, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Um, maybe um a better use of of uh bond funds would be to um lower our uh energy costs that, you know, is just money spent on PG&E that we may as well be setting on fire. Um, maybe by putting solar panels on all the flat roofs of the district or I don't know, something. Um, yeah, I don't, I I don't see why we need to be talking about a expensive parking garage when we're not out of the fiscal crisis yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Next on up, we have, um, thank you, Ms. Charles, Evan. And then Mike, Mi- Michiel Neder Alharazi. Go ahead. Probably mispronounced your name. You can correct me. You can come on board. I apologize. Evan.
Hello, uh, my name is Evan Chewie. I'm a Berkeley resident and a local scouting adventure advisor. I'm commenting on item fifteen as well, Berkeley High School Cast Cast Expansion Project. I'm excited to see the district preparing for the future, but I'm disappointed to see us back here again discussing parking structures. Uh, we already had this discussion. Yeah, here we are again, suggesting the advanced designs that make us spend ten to twenty million dollars of of our scarce bond money building redundant parking instead of increasing classroom space, lab space, um, better fields. We already have plenty of parking spaces available downtown. Center Street Garage has several hundred free spaces per day. Uh, so board members, please don't spend money, even on planning this redundant and unnecessary parking. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Um, next on up is Michiel Neder Alharazi and then Liza Lutzger. Um, Michiel, you are on board now.
Yes, hello.
Hi there. We can hear you. Hi there.
All right, yeah. Hi, my name is Michael Alharazi. I'm a current senior at UC Berkeley. I'm Berkeley High alum, class of twenty twenty-two. And as someone who was on the tennis team all four years, uh, I'm in favor of bringing the tennis courts back to Berkeley after over twenty years without them. For me, tennis was not only a sport uh as a student there, but it was also an experience and a way to build a community. Some of my favorite memories from high school were being a part of the tennis team and the relationships that I made and the life lessons that I learned on the court were second to none. Uh, we, it's important that the students are able to get their own courts because as a student there myself, I've missed countless classes and uh time in school just to travel to courts that were off campus for home games, which a lot of other schools don't have that problem. And we also have to like walk up a hill to get to those courts with our backpacks and our tennis bags as well. And uh, for, for sure, we need our own courts because
Be mindful.
There's a, okay, thank you.
Thank you and go.
Email you the rest of your comments to boardofed@berkeley.net.
Thanks a lot. Um, next on up Liza Lutzger and then Shoshana O'Keefe.
Hey, everyone. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, so Liza Lutzger, I'm also with Walkbike Berkeley, um, commenting on item fifteen, the garage. Um, this again, just echoing comments that this is really disappointing. Um, I really want to emphasize that the issue is not about building new parking spots. The bill, the issue here is about spending money on car storage instead of money for student classroom space. Um, this is something that this district needs to work with the city on. Any construction for this project is many years out and there's going to need to be a new bond from construction. And I understand that there have been difficulties with the bond and the, in the past in working with the cities, but you have the opportunity to rewrite a bond in a way that you can work with the city in a way that you can actually use future bond money to use those spaces that are already vacant. Berkeley taxpayers have been incredibly generous and voters have been incredibly generous, and this project is wildly unpopular. And there's very likely to be a lot of pushback from the Berkeley community in terms of supporting a new facilities bond that spends sixty-six dollars a day per person instead of spending something like about two hundred dollars for free transit passes for uh, which is exactly what it would cost. That's what it costs at UC Berkeley per per student.
Thank you. And you can, of course, email to add on additional commentary to the board. Um, next on up is Shoshana O'Keefe.
Shoshana is our last speaker for this first opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Hello, last speaker? Cool. Um, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Shoshana O'Keefe. I'm um a member of the Berkeley City Council. I'm also a Burke, a teacher at Berkeley High School. I'm also a BUSD parent. I do a lot of things, but I'm actually not here in any of those capacities. I'm actually here as a taxpayer, if anything. Um, I know a bunch of speakers have already spoken to it, but I just want to add my voice to the um chorus of objection to the idea that we might build this parking garage. Um, it's a fact that there are hundreds, many multiple hundreds of parking spaces at the city owned garage just one block from campus. Um, and I'm not authorized to speak for the city, but I have it on good authority that the city would be very willing to rent those spaces to uh Berkeley High uh teachers and staff. So please, it, I I'm assuming you're not going to uh actually build this garage. It's clearly please, it, I, I'm assuming you're not going to, uh, actually build this garage. It's clearly financially insane, but I just had to come here and speak out against it, just in case you were considering it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, council member, but not speaking in behalf of the city. Um, appreciate it.
No, not at all.
Um, we don't have any other speakers. I don't see anyone's hands raised. So we're now going to pivot back to our, um, board meeting. Um, we have, um, committee comments. Do we have any, um, committee members here? Who would like to make a public comment? Not seeing any. Okay, um, union comments. I believe we do have a union speaker from BFT speaking on behalf of Matt.
Sorry, Director. I do, sorry. Go ahead, Liz, Liz.
I see Casey Robinson. I, I, Casey, I see your hand now.
Oh, obviously, we do have a committee.
Committee, yes.
Yeah, I saw Casey. Apologies for not saying you want to, she's going to be elevated and you'll go on.
Thank you, Casey. You'll have five minutes.
Great.
Good evening. Pardon the delay. When you get promoted to panelist, it takes a little while. Um, good evening, Board Directors, Superintendent, and members of the Berkeley community. My name is Casey Robinson. Um, and I speak tonight as a parent of two thriving Berkeley High School students, um, formerly of Rosa Parks and Longfellow. Um, a former active member of several school site councils and PTA and an educator and a community advocate. Um, and I am here representing the Superintendent's African American Success Advisory Committee, also known as ASAC. We want to begin by acknowledging the bright spots and positive momentum that are evident in this year's student achievement data. Um, in literacy, BUSD's distance from standard scores improved at every grade level between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five, clear evidence that more students, including our focal groups, are moving closer to grade level expectations. School-level data shows double-digit gains for African-American students at several sites, Rosa Parks, Cragmont, Willard, Ruth Acti, Sylvia Mendez, and Longfellow. These are powerful examples of what is possible when high-quality instruction, intervention, and family engagement align. In science, African-American student performance increased by two percentage points over last year, reflecting stronger tier-one instruction and more coherent intervention systems district-wide. We celebrate these gains, and we commend the educators and leaders who are driving them. Yet, the ASAC's role is to keep the focus and the pressure on the work that remains. The data also makes clear that progress is uneven. ELA proficiency among African-American students remained largely flat, even as other subgroups continued to rise. Math proficiency declined by five points with notable drops in grades three, five, and eleven. And assessment participation rates among African-American students at eighty-eight percent in ELA and eighty-three percent in math fell below the state's ninety-five percent threshold, leading to dashboard penalties that obscure some of the real growth taking place. These numbers raise important questions, and we know the best way to answer them is to listen. That's why on November twelfth, ASAC will host a student and family forum to hear directly from those most impacted. We want to better understand why participation rates are lower, why math outcomes are declining, and what supports our students and families believe would make a difference. Their lived experiences will inform our recommendations and our report back to this board in December. In addition, ASAC members have committed to partnering with the district on the comprehensive improvement model, SIM for SIM DIG, um, for the Significant Disproportionality Plan. We recognize that over-representation of African-American students in special education is a systemic issue that demands transparency, collaboration, and sustained community partnership. We look forward to the November nineteenth community forum, where the district will present its plan to reduce and mitigate the disproportionality, and we stand ready to be active partners in that process. In closing, we celebrate the progress, but we do not rest. The ASAC remains committed to ensuring that Berkeley's African-American students are not only growing, but thriving, fully supported by systems that see, serve, and uplift them. Thank you for your continued partnership and your dedication to educational equity in BUSD. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Um, do we have other committee comments? I don't see any. Do we? I think we have a hand up.
We have one BFT. No more committees.
No more committees now. Sarah Carver of BFT for the union comment. Can we elevate Sarah?
Sarah's on her way.
Great.
Okay, hello there. Uh, good evening, Superintendent for Mortell and Berkeley School Board Directors. I'm Sarah Carver, Treasurer of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers and a kindergarten teacher at Malcolm X. My fellow members and I had elementary parent-teacher conference days last week, and every year I find that being provided this time in our schedules to be able to meet with families is critical in understanding each one of my unique students. It also sets a foundation for communication with families about their children's learning for the year ahead. In years prior, my colleagues and I had to spend our entire weekend or take sick days in order to work on report cards. Having report cards due only one full day after the end of the trimester gave us maybe one prep period, about an hour of paid time, to complete these, which was impossible. Thanks to a recent tentative agreement, TK through five educators now have four working days after the end of the first trimester to input grades into the district's report card management system. Educators are now given formal, consistent report card deadlines across the district, and such small requirements improve educators' working conditions and our ability to use that time to set students' academic goals for the second trimester. This is the kind of problem solving that BFT brings to the negotiations table and helps us better serve our students. As of October twenty-seventh, BFT and the district have already had thirteen sessions, each one lasting over an hour. Yet we still have heard nothing around compensation and benefits. Where's the same level of problem-solving, forward-thinking coming from the district? Our low compensation and high cost of benefits is a problem that needs to be addressed. As you heard from my fellow BFT members, both compensation and benefits have become a challenge in our own lives as we try to get through each day. I myself can barely afford to live in the Bay Area. With my BUSD income, I cannot afford to rent in Berkeley, and I'm just squeaking by in a one-bedroom apartment in Oakland. I have a veterinary appointment for my dog on Friday. I'm dreading the cost and how I afford this one visit. As a professional with master's degree and over ten years of experience serving young children, this is just one of many examples of how salary and benefits in BUSD are not keeping up with the costs. My story is just one of many hard-working, passionate educators who give so much to serve our students but are struggling to have enough for themselves in order to continue showing up to serve Berkeley students. The passion educators have for their work cannot be taken for granted, and yet we're not paid for meetings that occur after our duty day. Every year, inclusion specialists, speech-language pathologists, psychologists, and classroom teachers like myself educate many students with IEPs and 504s. In order to serve these students' needs and those that are unidentified who have needs, we do the work, meeting with parents, administrators, and other service providers, and continue to set up those needed supports that were discussed in those meetings. They're important. These meetings need to happen, but it's important to note the amount of time that they take and the work that is added to our overflowing plates. In my experience as a kindergarten teacher, I'm on as the only adult with my twenty-one, five, and six-year-olds for almost six hours straight. And after a short prep period to read our new literacy curriculum, create and set up the needed materials for four different subjects that I'm going to teach the following days. I also email families, colleagues, and work to set up field trips and so much more in that short prep period every day. It's challenging to finish this work in our duty day, and yet our amazing Berkeley teachers get it done. When a support meeting is scheduled after our duty hours, we want to show up. But right now, when we do, we're not paid for that time, and this feels disrespectful and doesn't value the crucial work that we do. Do not take advantage of our devotion for our students and take action with our current proposal that addresses this oversight. I sit with over twenty of my fellow educators on the negotiations team. As a full-time classroom teacher who uses so many hours after work, like this, to negotiate in our meetings for better student learning conditions and educator working conditions, I'm shocked and disappointed. When the district do- meets us at the table with those thirteen sessions we've had with little to nothing, this is precious time that we're giving. It's incredibly frustrating to have sat in so many sessions and still be where we have, should have been last May. Why does the district continue to stall? What information are you waiting for? This feels intentional. You will find that neighboring districts have also been forced to declare impasse, and that we don't know what's going to happen, but we've run into similar issues as they have. Oakland Educators Association, the United Educators of San Francisco, and United Teachers of Richmond have declared impasse already. We don't want to do that, but when will BUSD show up to the negotiations table with something for us to talk about? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carver. Um, do we have any other comment here with the, um, unions? Do you have any other unions present? BCC or Local Twenty-One or UBA? I don't see them online. Just want to double-check. Okay, not seeing them. Uh, we're, we're going to proceed to, um, board member comments. So as is our practice, we'd like to permit the student board member, who I think there is, is Korea and, uh, Armana are both here. Um, it looks like Armana just got on. Do you want to proceed to do public comment? And then Korea, you can also.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Cool. Go on, uh, go on ahead, Armana.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to highlight a super important change that I've already been discussing with our student body, and that's the implementation of the new PE program and how it fits into our current bell schedule at Berkeley High School. It is essential that students are included in this conversation, especially those with IEPs in the LEAP program and in small schools with specialized courses. Now, these groups of students already face scheduling, scheduling constraints, and adding another required class would make it harder for students to complete their A through G requirements. As a student in both the Berkeley International High School Small School and the Berkeley High Jazz Program, I've had to take my language requirement at Berkeley, Berkeley City College, excuse me, just to make both programs work. Now, if a required PE class had been in place earlier, I wouldn't have been able to participate in music programs like jazz, and many of my peers would not have been able to take ele- elective courses that are important to their academic growth. On top of that, as a track athlete with daily practices year-round, taking a PE class under the current bell schedule seems unnecessary and overly burdensome. Over fifteen hundred students at Berkeley High participate in athletics, and for many, adding required PE class would create similar conflicts and limit opportunities to pursue academic to pursue academics, electives, or arts programs. I understand that the district must comply with California law, but requiring freshmen to take PE classes under our current bell schedule requires real changes for students, and that is why I'm actively working to communicate with our student body on seeing where we fit in and how we would like to deal with, uh, changing our bell schedule, which is something the board has been discussing for a while now. And so, um, I really look forward to continuing our conversation today and looking at the Measure G program update and diving into those aspects, um, and also just learning more about, you know, how the tennis courts and these parking lots contribute to that. So, thank you all, and I look forward for the rest of today's meeting.
Thank you, Armana. Um, good. Korea, would you? It's up to you. Would you like to provide public comment? You don't have to if you're not ready. Okay, so Korea, uh, I don't think is, is, is going to provide comment this time. That's perfectly fine. Um, board members, uh, who would like to provide comment?
I'll go first to say that I, I'm gonna, um, skip my board comments tonight because we're already running so late. Um, and I'd love to hear the presentations that are ahead of us, so.
Thank you, Director Shashi. Others?
I was going to say the same thing. Even the slowness of, of all the Zoom, um, coordination, I'm happy to forego my board comments and move on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Vasidev?
Yeah, I'm happy to keep mine, uh, brief as well. I just wanted to thank all of the folks that came out to give public comment tonight for the families talking about the cell phone policy. We hear you. We had a robust discussion about having a family forum soon about the policy and look forward to, and about the implementation of the policy. I look forward to engaging with you and agree with the comments around transparency. So thank you for writing, and thank you for being here. Also, for our immigrant families, we know that this time is really difficult. We know that districts may have to flip the switch if there continues to be threat of ICE activity, particularly in Northern California, with families having to potentially go on emergency independent study, all sorts of things were discussed at the sanctuary, um, city task force meetings. I want to thank my colleague, uh, Director Corn for being there. Um, and so we're preparing, and part of that is making sure that our families have access to how we make important decisions about their children. And so I'm excited to go on the worldly contract, and we'll save my comments for that. There are comments. Um, and also just wanted to thank the folks that came to speak about the garage. I have, I have lots to say, as you know, about parking in general. And so I'll wait for that portion of the board meeting, uh, to give those comments. Thanks.
Thanks so much. I second the comments made by Director Vasidev. I'm going to also forego my chatting, um, but very glad to have everybody here. Um, and we're going to move on next to our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I moved to. I am beat by Director Shinaski. I'll second.
Okay, so now we've, uh, moved by Director Shinaski, seconded Director Vasidev. Uh, do we have the eyes?
I think.
I do roll call because we're online. Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Charis, you mind doing roll call?
Absolutely. Student Director Aradom? Present. Student Director Colston?
Director Colston may be having some technical issues, maybe, uh, is in absentia.
Uh, Director Vasidev?
Yes.
Director Shinaski?
Yes.
President Corn?
Yes.
President Chang?
Yes. Thank you so much. Um, okay, so the consent calendar has thus been approved. Motion approved. Um, next on up, we have discussion item, uh, fourteen-one. If I'm correct, looking at the calendar correctly, I mean, the agenda correctly. Um, it's an update on the federal program monitoring with PE.
Yes, that's us. Um, so I will have, uh, maybe joined by a couple of colleagues, and then I think Ms. Chides is going to put the slides up for us.
Cool, thank you. So I think we're making okay time. We're at eight thirty-four. I guess we'll be done at nine.
I'm loading the presentation now. Give me a moment.
Um, while we're waiting for the presentation to get loaded, uh, we are going, my name is Jill Hogan-Dyke. I'm the Associate Superintendent of the Educational Services Department in BUSD. Um, but as we're waiting for the slide deck to go up, um, we, we are going to be providing an update on our federal program monitoring with a focus on physical education. And since, um, physical education is the topic, I want to do a quick shout-out to our Berkeley High Jackets. We have not one, not two, but three playoff championship games that are happening today. Um, and we're excited to report that our girls' water polo team won their game, and they are advancing, uh, to the next game on Saturday. We also have a girls' volleyball game in Concord and a boys' water polo championship game in Marin. So shout out to our Jackets out there.
Yeah, amazing.
Okay. All right, so we are here to provide an update on federal program monitoring. Um, and this is a, a follow-up, but not the last conversation that we will have, um, regarding our federal program monitoring review and the work that we need to do to address um, some of the issues that were raised with regard to physical education, specifically at Berkeley High. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, just want to ground this work. Um, our mission in BUSD is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. Um, and part of that does have to do with, um, ensuring our students have, uh, the opportunity to exercise and learn all about, um, how physical education can benefit, um, them in their, in their lives. Um, for tonight, uh, we are going to be sharing the status of our federal program monitoring findings from spring of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we were last before the board. Uh, we were last before the board in April of twenty twenty-five, and at that time, um, we still set had some unresolved issues. Um, so we want to give you an update on that. Uh, we are going to outline some considerations that we have. For um, the Berkeley High School master schedule planning. And then we'll share next steps and um, a rough timeline for the work ahead. Next slide. So just a reminder about where this is stemming from. Um, we uh, Berkeley, the Berkeley Unified School District was selected for a federal program monitoring review. These are periodic reviews that are conducted by the California Department of Education. Um, and include um, anyone, uh, include the following. They're either an onsite or an online review. And for B U S D, that was an onsite review. We had members of the California Department of Education or C D E. Um, who spent a week with us here in Berkeley, um, reviewing uh, data and documents. They had interviews, they had classroom observations. Uh, in this case, it was uh, physical education. Observations, um, anything that is related to categorical programs or other state requirements. Um, the process is uh, one that ensures that school districts are, are meeting their physical. Their fiscal and their programmatic requirements um, for um, any of those state or federal mandates. And if uh, people are interested, the link to um, the California Department of Education or C D E website is there on that slide. Um, next slide, uh, for B U S D, uh, and back yet, we um. That one, yep. We were reviewed in nine different areas of which uh, physical education was one. Um, and so just want to start by saying on the next slide, um, B U S D uh, did update their board policy. With regard to physical education in early twenty twenty-five, just again recognizing the positive benefits of physical education. Um, that and, and those benefits that extend to student health and well-being and the connections they have to academic achievement. So uh, our board policy and the related administrative regulation are also linked on, on this slide. I'm gonna, uh, I failed to make introductions at the top of the order, um, when we're sitting in this virtual space. They weren't sitting next to me physically, but joining me today, um, at the, at the virtual dais. Our Principal Juan Regosa, he is our Principal of Berkeley High and one of our Vice Principals, um, Kelton Clegg. So I'm going to turn it over to Principal Regosa just to provide an overview about our findings in uh, physical education. And some of the work that we've done, uh, starting last spring, but really completed. Uh, at the beginning of last week, um, to resolve all of the findings that we had um, from this F P M review. Uh, Principal Regosa, I'll hand it over to you.
Uh, thank you so much, Jill. Uh, good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent and broader B U S D community. Thank you once again for allowing us to provide this important update on our physical education program. Uh, we view the federal program monitoring process as a critical opportunity to confirm our strengths and to identify clear. Actionable areas for systemic growth. The next two slides outline the four findings that resulted from the monitoring visit. Our first finding, P E O four testing fitness gram. Highlighted a need for us to refine our practice concerning the California Physical Fitness Performance Testing Program. The monitoring determined that our existing process must be strengthened to confirm that every student in ninth grade at Berkeley High School. Is administered the fitness gram test specifically within the mandated testing window of February through May of each school year. The second finding, P E O six pupil exemptions. Um, centered on the precise application of California Education Code criteria for student P E exemptions. This specifically addressed our need to ensure that when we utilize the permitted exemption options, such as the two-year or permanent exemptions. Where meticulously documenting and meeting every condition, including the requirement to offer appropriate P E courses. Next slide, please. Third, the C D E issued a finding regarding P E O seven focused on teacher, teaching and evaluation at the high school level. This finding emphasizes that our P E course of study must demonstrate comprehensive instruction. And evaluation across all eight state mandated content areas, including aquatics, gymnastics, rhythm and dance. And the mechanics of body movement. While our students engage in robust activities, the finding compels us to refine our curriculum mapping. And documentation to explicitly show the developmentally appropriate sequence and the evaluation methods for each required component. Finally, the finding under P E O nine addressed teaching credentials. This ensures that all instruction in physical education at B H S is provided by staff holding the appropriate physical education credential. Issued by the California Teaching um, Commission on Teacher Credentialing. And we make sure that happens through a review of staffing assignments to ensure that the primary teacher of record for every P E class holds. The necessary credential, and we clearly distinguish the supportive role of any instructional aides or paraprofessionals. Next slide. Now that we've reviewed the findings, let's turn our attention to the immediate and comprehensive actions we have taken since last spring. Our goal was not just compliance, but strengthening the long-term integrity of our physical education program at B H S. To address the fitness gram requirement, we have successfully developed a single plan of implementation to ensure that every ninth grade student is tested. Whether they are enrolled in a P E course or not. Our ninth grade families and students will learn more details in the coming weeks about what that will look like. We reviewed our exemption practice and crucially, the board adopted B U S D policy and regulation six one four two point seven. To solidify this new process. We have also refined the flow for receiving, reviewing and securing board approval. For these exemptions formerly known, formerly known as waivers. Ensuring every exemption is handled with adherence to California Education Code. Once again, beyond compliance, we see this as an opportunity to reinforce the entire P E program foundation. This includes developing a new physical education scope and sequence that explicitly covers all required state standards for the course of study. In support of this curriculum, we began a process to review and develop student evaluations to ensure they align directly with that updated content. Finally, we focus on staffing and scheduling. We've reviewed and updated teacher credentials for our P E team. And we initiated an internal data review to look at potentially necessary changes to our master and bell schedule. This final step is to ensure that our school structure can fully support the state's requirements moving forward and support our students. We're confident that the actions we've taken since last spring to resolve these findings establish a higher standard for the B H S P E program. I'll now bring in Vice Principal Kelton Clegg to further speak to master schedule considerations.
Thank you, Principal Regosa, and good evening. Uh, on this slide, what you can see is uh, us drilling in a little bit more. Of what master schedule considerations would be once we looked at our data around implementing the changes for P E. So on this slide, that asterix is going to be key because this is just looking at the ninth grade slice. If we were to use this year's data and ask ourselves the question, how do we solve for ensuring B H S students are enrolled in P E? And all ninth graders take the physical fitness exam, we could look at what it would mean for us to have every ninth grader enrolled. In a B H S ninth grade P E course. That would mean an increase in enrollment in ninth grade P E by five hundred and seventy-one students. Which is sixteen unique sections of P E and an additional increase of three point two F T E. That immediately raises, it raises some budget considerations. That's an increase in staffing cost. And as we begin exploring P E, questions came up about where it would fit into the master schedule. That also raised questions about facilities considerations. An increase in demand for P E is an increase in demand for spaces where students can participate in P E. And that means an increase in demand on our gyms and our field space while considering the limited access we have to shared facilities. From this, the question became not one of how do we resolve questions in P E? But how do we ensure that all Berkeley High students have access to an equitable master schedule? That provides them the opportunities to both meet graduation requirements and A to G eligibility. Next slide, please. So master schedule work requires deep collaboration and a number of voices. And as we began to look more into our question of master scheduling, our partners in visual and performing arts. Career Technical Education, World Language, Special Education, Multilingual Student Programs. Began raising questions with us about what the student experience would be with these changes and what access to courses would look like. Our questions are now ones asking us to consider, how do we balance our required courses, our electives and P E? How do we make sure that we fulfill our guarantee to equitable access to courses for all of our learners? Especially our students receiving special education services and our multilingual program. How do we continue to support our robust C T E pathways? Our two-year required world language sequence for college eligibility and are incredibly diverse in a robust V A P A program. While also offering these P E changes. And how do we simply address the challenges in meeting A to G requirements? Showing that it's not a P E question, it's a question about the schedule more broadly. It raises questions about what is our class timing, the structure of our classes, how we allocate our F T E and align it to those course requests from students. And even where our professional development would fall. It raises questions beyond just simply our gym and field access, but classroom accessibility. And it brings up important questions about sustainability and the cost and resource implications for building a master schedule. From there, we've developed uh, an idea and a plan for moving forward. And with that, Principal Regosa, would you take over?
Yes, next slide, please. So as we look ahead to bigger changes to our master and bell schedules, I'll bring us back specifically to our P E program this year. And over the next couple of years. As a reminder for everyone, California Education Code states very clearly. That all students are required to successfully complete two years, that's twenty credits of physical education. In order to be eligible to graduate from high school. To support our B H S students to do so, this twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We will be administering the fitness gram to all ninth grade students, again, whether they are in P E course or not. We are also maintaining the current exemption process, including athletic and community program P E exemptions. These two facts will remain true in the coming twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Looking towards the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, all ninth grade students at B H S will take P E at B H S. And will therefore be able to carry out all fitness gram testing in a P E course. By then, also, we will update our exemption process to align with state requirements. First, in order for students to be eligible for a two-year exemption, they must take and pass the fitness gram. Second, in order to be eligible for a permanent exemption, students must be sixteen and complete tenth grade. I will now pass it back to Associate Superintendent Jill Hugendike.
All right. Thank you, Principal Regosa. Um, so in terms of moving forward and next steps. Um, you can see a couple of things outlined here, wanting to move uh, through, continue our internal analysis. Between now and winter twenty twenty-six, which is uh, this, this time period that we're in now. Um, we are going to focus on communication and information sharing so that we can keep our staff and families informed. Um, and then uh, begin to plan for broader community engagement in early twenty twenty-six. Um, this is a complex shift and we want to make sure that we are responding carefully and accurately. We know that many in our community are eager for answers and many who are eager and ready to support the district in this effort. Now that uh, C D E has cleared B U S D's F P M findings, we will continue on to the work. To address some of these related program components. Um, and as you saw, uh, the, in what Vice Principal. Clegg shared some of the complexities that we are going to be navigating as we start to formulate plans for the work ahead. Um, considering the factors that we have highlighted tonight, including but not limited to the resource and staff capacity. Financial constraints, particularly uh, given um, some of the budget balancing work that will likely continue uh, this year. Um, and our facilities work, you're going to hear a little bit about that um, tonight. Uh, we're extending the timeline for implementation for a new Berkeley High Master Plan Schedule. And you saw that timeline outlined in the slide that uh, Principal Regosa reviewed. Um, it's important that our internal working groups fully analyze the schedule, staffing, budget, facilities implications. So the options that we bring forward are realistic and thoughtful. Um, once that foundation is in place, we'll engage broader stakeholder groups and families to gather input and refine recommendations together. Um, including input from our students. Uh, so we're going to continue our internal analysis through the end of this ca- calendar year. Uh, we did send staff and community messaging earlier this week, both to the Berkeley High Community. Um, and to our middle school communities because we know, we heard from one of our uh, middle school students this uh, this evening. Um, and we're going to be updating a frequently asked questions page on our district website. Uh, we know that there have, there will be some questions from the board tonight, so we want to make sure that we can um, capture anything that's coming up as we um. Prepare for that update um, by the end of the business day on uh, Friday. Um, our Berkeley High team is also preparing to include information about P E at the ninth grade info night. For our rising ninth graders that will uh, will occur at the first part of December. And then in early twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, we will review our internal findings and gather additional feedback. Um, from families, students and staff to inform recommendations to the board. Um, similarly to the spring, we are prioritizing accuracy over speed and we're taking the time. And I hope you saw that in what was shared tonight to understand all of the considerations in this complex issue. And we'll look forward to opportunities to engage our broader community in those conversations. Um, and then on the last slide, just as um, uh, just so everybody is aware about where to find updates and information. Um, there is a uh, physical education F A Q that is posted on the Berkeley High website. It's also linked from the main website page on the B U S D um, website page. And if you have uh, any questions, you can send them to uh, B H S P E. We won't necessarily be responding to each individual question, but we'll be pulling um, themes that come out of those questions. To help inform future updates on the F A Q. Um, there's also a link there to the California Department of Education website about physical education requirements. Should anyone want additional information. And with that, we will take questions from the board.
Thank you so much. Other questions from board members? Thanks for that presentation, by the way.
I have a question, President Chang. Can you show slide eleven again? I um, I, I'm just trying to underst- I, I want to understand the exemption process. That you all are working toward. I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand. Whether we are ultimately expecting that the, the ultimate plan that is developed in a couple of years. Will mean that every ninth grader and every tenth grader takes P E? Or will it only be every ninth grader and then some tenth graders will take P E? Um, I'm trying to sort of understand this eligibility for a permanent exemption after tenth grade. And how that connects with the requirement that you take two years of P E. I see Kelton, uh, Mr. Clegg nodding at me. Perhaps you can explain more.
I'm just excited about everything, uh, with the corn, so um. Uh, to start off on it and, and please uh, join me, my fellow presenters on here. Um, from my understanding, it's on the bottom of the slide, is that all ninth graders would take P E, but the exemption process looks a little bit different in tenth grade. Um, there are sports that will qualify for an exemption based upon their relationship to C I F. And those would be exemptions in tenth grade. And the other piece to note is, it has the, the double asterix there. Is that in order to have a permanent exemption, you need to be sixteen, have completed tenth grade. And for the two-year exemption, you must also have to pass the fitness gram. So there, there's multiple kind of levers that are being pulled here because it's not simply can I get an exemption? It's well, which of the exemptions am I touching? Am I doing an exemption for tenth grade because I'm in a B U S D C I F athletic? And is that exemption the same as earning credits? So I think that's where we're, we're, we're doing the work is clarifying there of the difference between a waiver and exemption, earning credits. The difference between a C I F B U S D sport versus a.
The difference between a CIF BUSD sport versus a club sport. And, and that's really complicated. Uh, many of our sports, it's hard to tell where the line between club and CIF intersect. So I think that's some of the clarity that we're going to be working on as a team to identify early for families and students. What are the sports that would count for it? But we would see a different enrollment in tenth grade PE than in ninth grade. That currently my understanding of the exemption process would be if I'm in tenth grade, completed ninth grade course of study one, my tenth grade physical education could be with my CIF sport. But I still may have to pass the, into the fitness gram and reach sixteen and complete sophomore year to still get that exemption that follows afterwards.
And so can I ask a follow-up question? So does that mean if I'm a fifteen-year-old junior? That I am going to be required to take PE unless I'm in a CIF sport? If I happen to be younger than most of my peers? That was me when I was in high school.
Yep. Yeah, I think there, and so one of the nuances that you'll hear, uh, Berkeley High has for many, many years been using the term waiver. That was one of the corrections that needed to get made in all of the related documents. The CD is the only entity that can issue waivers, so we have exemptions. So if you hear exemption, that, those are the two things. And I don't know that we have as a, as a district and particularly at Berkeley High have been uh, utilizing or sharing information as broadly about the two-year exemptions and permanent exemptions that are now in the board policy at the same level that folks, um, in our community understand the athletic exemption and our community programming exemptions that have been happening.
And I, I just wanted to make, uh, make a comment also, uh, Board Vice President Corn. That if we zoom out, the, the reason why, um, Associate Superintendent's comment about accuracy over speed, it's so important is because the CD requires that all high school students actually take four hundred minutes of physical education every ten days for all four years of high school. Um, even though two years are required for graduation. And so getting these exemptions right matter for our students, especially those that successfully complete the fitness gram, complete their two years of credit and, and are sixteen, so they can be exempted from that requirement for their junior and senior year.
I had a quick question about that exemption for like junior, senior year. Does that apply to like outside of Berkeley High club sports? Like if you're not involved in CIF? Will that work if let's say a student plays like club soccer or something through like a local Berkeley team? Like how does that fit in?
Right. So right now, those are included in what we call, um, the community program exemptions. Um, and though it, as we move through this process of making sure that we've got, um, the requirements met for the different grades that require PE, we might need to be making some shifts in those community program exemptions. Um, but we will, um, again, that's an, that's another nuance that's really requiring us to dissect it um, before we put that out more broadly. But what's important to know right now is that, um, those community exemptions are still a current part of our process. And as you saw on that slide, um, that Vice President Corn just has put back up on, that would continue then also for next year. Um, and then as we look at the other schedule implications, um, we will be communicating out what that may or may not look like. Um, depending on what our scheduling options are.
Thank you. We had two questions from, um, board members. I don't know if Director Shinasi or Director Vasadev was first.
It is a really short question. I just wanted to know, I see on the implementation timeline, first, thank you so much for the presentation and really nice to meet you, Mr. Clegg. I, um, had a question just about like during the implementation phase, I'm sure there's going to be internally some work on like hiring for next year. When is that expected to come to the Board of Education, like within the budgeting process? Like, when can we know like how much this is going to cost?
Right. So that's what we're really hoping, hoping to have by spring of next year. So that we've got a year to plan for that because there are some pretty significant budget implications. The slide that, um, Vice, uh, Vice Principal Clegg shared, um, we had the big, what I call the big fat asterisk, even though it was tiny and printed at the bottom, that those were numbers really based on ninth grade enrollment. If you're looking at a three point two FTE increase, that is about four hundred thousand dollars. And if we're looking at a master schedule change that would have implications for additional classes, then you can kind of do the math about what that might look like. Um, and then considering a number of the budget uncertainties, uh, we just want to make sure that we've got a long enough um, runway to plan for what those additional costs are going to be because they won't be small.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Shinasi?
Yeah, just quick question. So on the second to last slide, uh, where you have moving forward next steps. I just know that there's quite a few, like Kelton, I know that you know, and, and Jill as well. Um, there's quite a few families that are really engaged and have been spending a lot of time thinking about all of this and would like the opportunity to, to sort of engage and talk about it, um, more deeply with the district. So I, I don't see any specific sort of community engagement sessions or anything like that. And I'm wondering, um, if that's something you've thought about and, and what that might look like.
It, it's definitely something that we've thought about. When we had come before you in April, um, the big fat asterisk on that slide was that we had anticipated doing some community engagement this fall. Um, as, uh, we've shared tonight, that was an original engagement, thinking about what it would look like uh, to consider PE and what a master schedule might look like to address some of the concerns that many of our community members surfaced in the spring, particularly with regard to, um, our VAPA programming and our world language programming. Um, as you could see that as we started to have these internal conversations, the complexities of other areas that we needed to attend to, um, it was sort of like peeling back the onion. So we, I do recognize that there are a number of families that want to engage, but we needed to get, um, some of this internal thought process and analysis done before we start that. So we're looking at broader community engagement, which would be inclusive of our families and students beginning in early, uh, twenty-two-six. That's what, that's the bottom of that slide. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other board members have questions?
I just have one additional question that might be better answered in the next presentation about facilities, which is sort of about, do we know what our current square footage of gym space per student is? And in order to kind of project how much gym space we would need for these additional sections of PE and additional students. But again, that might be better held for the facilities discussion.
Better for the next. I might, I might guarantee that Assistant Superintendent Kalis will have the answer off the top of his head, but it's definitely more appropriate for that presentation.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you, team, for your presentation. Much appreciated. Important issue. And nice to meet you, uh, Vice Principal Clegg as well. Um, thanks. I think we're moving on to fifteen point one. It's nine oh five. Uh, we have an action item. Um, it's approval of Measure G program update, including Berkeley High School capacity and expansion. Um, uh, CNE. Um, so who do we have? Who is speaking on this? I would assume.
That's me, President Chang. I originally had my whole team on the hook. I let them off just in the interest of brevity, trying to pass it around on Zoom. Um, it's, I think it's just going to be more direct for me to speak to it.
Presentation, yes.
Thank you. Um, there's a number of slide, uh, slides in this presentation that sort of cover the past of how we got to where we are. I think it's important that that's in there. I will try to move through that very quickly because I'm sure you all remember it, but it's there more for your information. And then, uh, take you to where we are.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, our first slide is always, not this one, the next slide is always our mission, um, which it is important as it does align with BUSD's mission, which is the facilities division is committed to supporting the mission of BUSD by creating environments that promote a positive learning experience, create safe and welcoming schools and afford, and to afford our students, staff and neighbors, a community hub to embrace the four E's of BUSD. Um, so tonight, we're going to talk about a few things. We're going to talk about the Berkeley High School Capacity and Expansion Project. We're going to talk about the Berkeley High School Special Day Class Facility. Uh, Special Day Class Facility is, uh, naming convention that came up with our special ed team, but obviously we're open to discuss that. And then just some general program budget updates. Next slide. So Berkeley High School Capacity and Expansion, um, this picture I use just because it really, it's, it's a great example of the overcrowding that we have at Berkeley High. Um, I can talk to you all day about how we're really limited on classroom space and the master schedule shows that. But even when you look at the conditions, this is a normal passing period in the G building and it's just absolutely packed. And it's, it's not a safe environment, nor is it conducive because our teachers are running through those halls as well, typically changing classrooms between periods. Next slide. So, um, project history and needs, I don't think I need to spend too much time on this. But you know, the facilities needs assessment and master plan, uh, showed the outstanding need for additional classrooms at Berkeley High. The master schedules for the last several years have showed the, the need for that. Um, current campus, what it lacks, no tennis courts and mullering field, but it lacks infrastructure. Next slide. Why don't we jump ahead a little bit here if we can, Liz? And we can keep going. Uh, keep going. And we can go past this because we will talk about that. And we can go past this one as well. So the original plan showed a capacity and expansion project, which afforded us a couple of different things. One of those was actually triggering a need to move the softball field over to mullering field. This would greatly impact the, uh, the green space over at mullering field. There was a lot of community input about this, just around the clank of bats and the noise that goes with softball. And this absolutely had a negative effect on, uh, BTA and BIS. So, uh, next slide. We also heard when we studied that first option from athletics, that the implications to the right field line of the baseball field were going to make it nearly impossible for baseball to continue to compete there. So we looked at some other options and we came up with this option, which it gave them the field lines back that they needed. But once we studied it a little bit further, what this did was put the prevailing winds always at the batter's back, which now there's no field that we can really put in that limited space that would actually prevent almost every good hit on a windy day from going over that fence. So next slide. Um, also the capacity expansion project, it added by moving the softball field, it added room for the five tennis courts that are needed for Berkeley High Athletics as well as the community. But also then it addressed the need for more classrooms. Right now, um, this original project as it was designed, it added a five thousand square foot CTE lab for advanced machining and robotics. Uh, excuse me, advanced machining, manufacturing and robotics. It added the robotics field that was necessary. It also added nine additional, uh, or five additional gen ed classrooms in this building as well as four in the existing G building, um, which, uh, currently is used for CTE among other things. Uh, it gave the campus additional restroom space, additional ancillary space and offices. Next, next slide. So, as I said, the existing proposal gave us those nine classrooms, cross-campus supervision, dedicated CTE space, priority between ba, or parity, excuse me, between baseball and softball, tennis courts and restrooms. So when we listened to all of the community feedback, one of the things that we quickly realized was that if we were to address the desires of the community, the wishes of the board and the, the needs of the school, right? The project was exponentially growing. So instead, we went back and we said, what is the overall need of the school? Um, let's look at this sort of from a ground up approach and take another look. And the new CNE proposal, what it does is it actually adds twenty-eight additional gen ed classrooms plus four in the existing G building for a total of thirty-two new classrooms. The additional office space and conference space, dedicated CTE and advanced machining, applied manufacturing, robotics, all those labs. Uh, four to five tennis courts, and I'll get to why it says four to five, and potentially parking. I'm going to harp on that for a second because what we're not doing is asking, we're not just saying we want to build a parking garage there and nothing more. What we're proposing tonight is a massing diagram. And in that massing diagram, the massing study shows us what can fit. And one of the challenges that we had is we worked for over a decade with our city partners around parking permits. And about a year and a half, uh, two, about a year and a half ago, the city really stepped up and they gave us parking permits for Berkeley High. We currently get about two hundred parking permits, I believe, per year for Berkeley High, or we currently purchase about two hundred parking permits. But with that, we still are able to offer parking spots for a hundred and forty-four spaces. So what we did study was not to add parking or anything like that, but really, how can we offer some level of replacement parking so that we're not going backwards? You know, when we solved the parking problem for Berkeley High with the two hundred parking permits, that did a lot of things. And the primary thing that it did was prior to that, many of our educators, roughly two hundred of our educators were leaving their classrooms every one hour, every two hour to move their cars. This solved for that, but based on the parking study that was done leading up to the parking permits, we pushed the city's neighborhood parking with permits to, I believe, and please don't quote me, I don't have the numbers, but I believe just over the ninety percent limit. If we displace another hundred and forty-four cars into the neighborhood, I actually think we exceed the hundred percent permit. But now we act, the, the hundred percent capacity, but now we also have a struggle with how do we make sure that our educators are getting to work on time? So for that reason, we did a massing study, we looked at all of them. We wanted to show that tonight and we'll, we're welcome to take feedback and we can amend however the board wants to give action to move forward. Next slide. So we looked at three different massing studies, um, for the Milvia Street Lot, which is currently where the parking is for Berkeley High, and it was the former home of the tennis courts many years ago. Option one, uh, this added, um, excuse me, this added our twenty-five classrooms, it, it still left some parking in the space. Uh, and it added the CTE and robotics lab. The next slide, and these were discussed and vetted at subcommittee. I just want to point that out. Uh, option two, what this did was it offered again ninety-four spaces of replacement parking, um, twenty-eight classrooms. Uh, and as well as the needed, uh, circulation space on the outdoor area in the center there. And go to option three, if you would. So option three, this was born out of the need really to, once we started to understand the results of federal program monitoring and how it impacted PE, uh, it was very clear that there's not enough gym space to actually support the needs of Berkeley High. So we said, how can we incorporate a gym? So what we showed here is in brown on the bottom right of that, uh, you have two levels of parking that offers a hundred and ten replacement spots for the existing hundred and forty-four. Above that, in that, uh, purple color, what you see is a PE gym. To the left of that is three levels of classrooms up above, which is twenty-eight classrooms. And beneath that is the, uh, the extra height that's needed for the five thousand square foot CTE lab as well as for the, uh, the robotics field that they need to, to continue to build and compete. When we looked at all of the options, this was the option that was, uh, chosen by the subcommittee as it offered the most use for Berkeley High and it truly actually solves all of the problems. Now, one of the things that I want to point out, because like I just said, the board can give action with direction on what to further study, what to design, what to commit to, and that includes pulling pieces out if the board chose to do that. If the board did not want to include a gym, tell me, John, figure out what it's going to take to do it without the gym. If the board didn't even want to have conversation around the replacement parking, you can do that. And then what you also see kind of crossing the street there in all three of these options is a bridge crossing over Milvia. And I know that we have, uh, from subcommittee, some concerns around that. The reason for the bridge is, one, first and foremost, is during the day when kids are at school, we are responsible for their safety. So that includes getting them across Milvia. But two, it's also around funding. When we eventually, if this building were to be built and were to be opened. You will require some additional staff, for example, some additional SSOs to be placed in this building across the street. But if you make it an open campus for every period for students to move back and forth across Milvia. Now you're increasing your staffing even more because you're opening and closing that campus between every single period. Right now it's an open campus at lunchtime. So I point this out just because it's in there and it's something that can be discussed. But the primary reason why it's in there again is this is just a massing study. It's to see what fits and what fits where. And when we first considered the idea of a bridge. Obviously what we don't want to do is make it that that bridge removes a classroom from an existing building as a pathway. And what we saw was that it actually lines up perfectly to implement something like this. So next slide. So mullering field, we looked at three different proposals. And I want to give credit where credit is due, and that is, you know, we have. A very active tennis community in Berkeley. And with that, um, there, there are some architects and designers who work here. And originally what we were hearing from our design team was that the maximum number of courts that you can fit in that space was four. And the Berkeley community, they spoke up and they were very vocal about telling us, no, we've mapped it out, you can fit five. We did go back and we pushed back on our designers to figure it out and they were able to figure out how to fit that and actually how to fit more, as you'll see. You go into the next slides. So. Why five courts? One of the things that we've also learned from all this programming is working with. Tennis coaches and our athletic directors is really to continue or to be able to host matches per CIF. We do need to offer five courts so that that can happen. The first option shows five tennis courts in the current green space. No real changes, uh, to the baseball field itself as far as size or anything like that. On the bottom left, under the tennis courts, and I apologize that it's not shown on these, these drafts, these sketches. There would be a, uh, uh, an infrastructure building that includes restrooms and changing rooms. But it does relocate the existing basketball court that's used very heavily by BTA and BIS. To the far right of the field. That creates several challenges in the sense from BTA's perspective is they lose sightline. For, uh, supervision while that court is in effect. But it also chews up half of the green space that's been still left available is open for the community at any time. So next slide, option two. What we looked at was, is there a way to possibly offer even more? For our BTA and BIS students and the community and implement a track? And if we did that. Then we would absolutely be limited down to four courts. Um, and we had a track option and then. We also would have the basketball court on the far side of the field. Option three. Which is what the subcommittee, uh, approved. On the far right of your screen there, we're able to maintain them, all of the green space that's existing on that end of the field. For community use, we are able to fit five tennis courts. And move the basketball court to the far side of the field. Where BTA still has direct line of sight, even with the infrastructure building in place. This does allow us to bring back tennis to BUSD facilities, it allows us to maintain basketball. All of this can be used by BTA and BIS. And it also keeps softball in its existing home at Berkeley High. Since what we're talking about now is a potential new building across the street. So next slide. So this is something that I talked about at subcommittee meeting, just to really show the community that we are listening. One of the, we, we heard a lot of concerns, right? And there were a lot of repetitive concerns around mullering field. But one of the things that we even heard is in that neighborhood, not only are they most pressed for. Community space, but that open green space at mullering field is currently the only place that a lot of people have to even walk their dog. Right? We have this tiny little parcel of land that I recognize that it could be. Taken as like, wow, you're going to offer us that, but it's something in an effort to try to find a solution. Behind BTA on the corner on MLK where the arrow is pointing to. There's a very small lot that's currently paved and fenced in. And it's not offered as additional parking for BTA. To extend their parking lot, just because we can't get into it. Going from the BTA parking lot, we have a large PG&E transformer and we're too close to the curb. To offer curb cuts, so it's really a waste of land. So if we were able to do a partnership with the city around maintaining it, we could even turn that into a community dog park. Next slide. So another piece that we did talk a lot about in the past is community engagement. But I think it's important to note here because I was listening to the comments tonight even. About please don't do this and so on and so forth, and I, I don't disagree. But what I would say is that the, the way that community engagement and board approvals work. For facilities in education is that facilities is required to come and talk to the board. Prior to making any decisions or to moving forward to even spend dollars to study things, to design things, et cetera. So we're a little bit broken or backwards, not us, but the education system as a whole in the sense of. We have to publicly talk about something, but then we're asked to engage. Before we've had the opportunity to even truly study it. So that's why the engagement started out very slowly on this project, right? Moving forward, what you see on the left is a list of the engagement that happened. But even taking comments out of that engagement, what we heard was that when we did offer like a listening session at BTA. Is that not enough time was afforded. So one of the things that we would like to do or that we're planning to do around this is. As far as community engagement goes, we plan on doing two sessions right off the bat. That are actually nothing but listening. And what we want to hear is really the community's concerns, the input, either the support for. Or the opposition of the project and the reasons why. We plan on doing two, two-hour sessions to start. The first one being virtual to allow for people to show up, it's a little bit easier sometimes virtually. And then there was also a strong need for in-person engagement. So understanding how December is very difficult for a lot of people with the holidays. We wanted to do a two-hour virtual listening session in December with a in-person followed up in January. Following that, we would do a report out in February, that would be just an informational meeting. And it would also help us define what the future community engagement looks like and when that would happen. In addition to those community engagement meetings. There's opportunity for design input and programming meetings. So from January to March, we would do an internal stakeholders design input meeting around the building. And we would follow that from March to June, and these are, these dates can be fluid, right? For external stakeholders, we want to hear their input on design. And really it's, it's going to land in the neighborhood, it's going to land in the downtown district directly across from Berkeley High. This is a very visual area, so we want to give the community the opportunity for that input. In February of 26, we would have an internal stakeholder design meeting. With athletics, that includes the administration at the high school, BTA and BIS, it includes our athletic directors. Our coaches, et cetera. And then from March, uh, to May roughly. Is an external stakeholders design meeting around just the athletics, which in this case is mullering field. Now, it's not to say that it'll absolutely happen at mullering field, I've heard desires to say, hey, put the tennis courts up on the roof of the new building. Just at a quick look, it doesn't fit. As far as we can see it, just because the footprint is, while we're still taking up the whole lot. We're not building a rectangular cube and dropping it on the lot. But it's not to say that it definitely doesn't, or we can't design it, so it will. That's something that we have to further study. Um, next slide. So estimated costs, the current CNE project is trending at 49.7 million. Um, and that is a board authorized, uh, a project. What we're suggesting is that we do not move forward with that. And instead we ask the board to consider moving forward with the larger project. So what does that look like? Well, as we showed you, option three. Of the building as well as option three of mullering field, both subcommittee approved. Right now, all we can give you is a conceptual cost based on conceptual design. That project can range anywhere from 130 to 180 million. And if the board had a desire to say, you know what, we don't, we, we have no interest in putting parking there, right? We don't want to put parking there, the teachers are going to have to figure it out, or whatever the answer is. What we estimate we can reduce that by is roughly $20 million. So with that, I'm going to stop the presentation for a few minutes. I think we should go to questions or. Uh, any conversation around this and then we can come back to pick up the next part of the presentation.
Our board members, it looks like Director Shnaski has her hand raised, um, Director Shnaski, and then. Please proceed.
I'll, I'll ask a couple of questions, I might want to ask a couple more, um, but I'll leave some space for others. The first thing is, um, with the PE facilities, I mean, this is going to be a long-term project, so I'm just wondering like, do we have an estimate? Of the cost per student for the PE? Kind of, or sorry, the gym square footage required per student? So we understand the need for a new gym? And then also, do we have a sense of what we're going to do in the interim? Until this new building is built where all the students will go to do their PE? Just as an understanding of why the space would be needed, that's my first question. And then I have a question about the parking as well.
Okay, so the requirement around what's needed for PE, I would have to dig into title five a little bit more to really understand that for the square footage. But what I can tell you is, based on my conversations with the high school. Based on my understanding of the master's schedule, so on and so forth. Right now, our gym space is absolutely maxed out and the saving grace is always and has been. Is the field that's outdoors, the athletics plaza, et cetera. But what that doesn't do is solve for rainy days, it doesn't solve for when the field is wet, et cetera. So right now, without adding all of the new ninth graders or all of the ninth graders into PE. They're really pushing the gyms beyond capacity. What will happen once you add and, uh, Director Hugendike, or I'm sorry, Associate Superintendent Hugendike, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said about 560. Ninth graders, right? What'll happen is what happens at a lot of schools, which is on those rainy days or on the days that it's wet. You get 140, 150 kids in a gym, walking in a circle. And they're walking in a circle so that you can check the box of physical education. But it's not providing education and we're trying to solve for that sooner.
Great, thank you. Um, my other question is around the parking, so I think. You know, we've heard it loud and clear from community members that no one wants to build parking. But we have, you know, this real constraint, um, parking was built, was written into this bond. As a top priority for Berkeley High because our teachers and staff need, uh, the parking, they're, they're driving in. And so I would like to understand more about the possibilities around, um, different options for parking. Aside from the option of simply saying, we're not going to do it. And, and if that can be studied, um, so that we understand and maybe some more community engagement around that.
Yeah, so that's. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, the, and then the last question, just so that I can shut up, or I mean, be quiet, um, is. What exactly are you asking for us tonight? Because I think there's some confusion about what it is, what the action actually is tonight. So I, I want it to be very clear what you are asking of us as a board tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the parking, you know, we did a lot of research on it and we spent a fair amount of legal dollars working on that. When we were discussing it a few years ago. As far as there was an, there was a request for us to rent spaces from the city. There was a request for us to buy spaces in the city garage. And renting spaces unless it's for an, a, an interim condition. Meaning like if you were redoing the existing parking lot, right? And you needed interim housing for those cars. You can rent that at a, in a short term out of the bond, just like you would rent a modular or a mobile. But you can't rent them long-term or in perpetuity with bond dollars. So. The only way that that would get done is, uh, unfortunately either an encroachment to the general fund, or it would come directly from staff. We were also asked to research if we could buy the spaces from the city. And under the current bond, we cannot. What we learned is that we would actually have to pass a separate bond. So let, we've talked about the possibility of going out for a facilities bond in 2028. As I understand it, uh, we would actually have to go for potentially two bonds. There would have to be a general obligation facilities bond. And then a general obligation bond to actually purchase spaces from the city. But whether or not that's an option. Or how we would have, at this point, because years have passed, right? Or how we would even afford to partner with the city on their ongoing maintenance costs. Because the city operates a commercial garage, which is very different than what we're looking at here. And I remember in two by two, when we discussed their maintenance costs several years ago. It was exponentially higher than what it would cost us to operate a private garage. So the, those operating costs also cannot be bond funds. So then we have to figure out if those operating costs are X dollars per year, how are we funding that? So at the time, the, you know, when we determined right off the bat, we couldn't afford it. The question was, well, pay for it out of the maintenance tax. Well, okay, but if you do that, now you can no longer afford to upkeep your buildings. Right? So it's, it's, it, it's a problem because to buy them is one thing, but then to pay the operating costs that continue to move on. Is a bigger problem for us, right? Not to say that we won't reengage and continue those conversations. I think we should, I think we should resurface those conversations and they start at the two by two, right? And we can have them, but I don't have the answers, I don't, I don't have a, a blank checkbook, right? So that's the first, and then, um, I apologize, it just slipped my mind, it's getting late. What was your next question? What am I asking you for? What's the action? Right, thank you, sorry. So really the action on this particular project. Is we're asking the board for authority to begin with the design. And let me be very clear. What we can afford to do out of this current bond is actually design out this project. Whether it be the entire project that we see as option three across the street and mullering field. Or maybe it's something smaller than that. We can engage, if it's the board's desire with our design team, if you give action to say, hey. Go ahead and move forward with designs, but only start the designs on really the CTE, because that building, if you look at it in the. And, and the massing study is sort of broken into sections, right? So can we begin the design work that we would really need, at least on the classroom side of the building? With further community engagement, further conversations with the board, with city council, with two by two and everyone else. To then really determine, do you want to incorporate parking into it? The same holds for mullering field. By authorizing the, the, the concept of option three for mullering field. It's not telling the community, this is what we're doing yet, right? It's telling the community that we are committing that we're going to do something, right? Facilities is authorized to do the work that it needs to do, but we wouldn't start the design work around mullering field. Until that community engagement is scheduled to end, which is, I believe it was around May I said earlier. Does that, does that capture all your que-? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, good thinking. And Director Vassadev?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I, you know, both at the committee, at the subcommittee meeting, now for the rest of the board who wasn't there. I continue to have concerns about the bridge design. So for me, yes to CTE, yes to mullering field. But I do have concerns about the parking spots, right? Because today we found out new information, there's. There was a council member who wasn't here in the capacity of a council member, but did share that she has it on good authority, right? That there's openness to engage in the garage and maybe can, maybe the conversation has changed now from. Where it was previously, and I remember being part of the two by two when those initial conversations took place. And we couldn't get to an understanding on how to, how to use the garage, a garage in a situation where it was going to be a win for the district and a win for the city. And so I know we have a new city manager, you know, we have like new leadership. I would, you know, urge the staff if we can to have those conversations, since so many people showed up today. Around the, the potential use of the garage. At the two by two, to see how, if conditions have changed, right? And, and if there's more willingness. Specifically on behalf of the city, which there could be, because we have a new city manager now. And also, right, I do have concerns about the bridge. Because it would go over a protected bike, bike lane. And also I think it's important to, when, for a design element like that, that it doesn't have a negative impact. On the current bike lane and also, um, that we explore things like, you know, the crossing at Washington Road, we close the street, there's. There's city input that we need to know, to really know what are other potential alternatives. And I know that we had this conversation in facilities sub that maybe we're not there yet. But when we put a, a schematic like that out there, right? I think it's, it's worth, um, having those conversations with the city to see what other creative solutions could be. Found besides the bridge. So those are the two elements, both the parking garage and the bridge that I have concerns with. But I do also understand that there are staff members. But I do also understand that there are staff members like, you know, sped teachers or IAs or, you know, folks that have to come in quickly, find a spot and go serve our children, right? Who may need parking. And so I think reopening that conversation and in the two by two where there seems to be more willingness to support now on, on the city side. And I, and I am grateful for the residential parking permits that the city supported us with last time. But there seems to be, there seems to be more willingness to, to support even more. And so let's entertain those conversations at the two by two before making any final calls around the parking lot.
Oh, absolutely. I absolutely agree. So to, to Director Shnaski's question earlier, right? Hearing Director Shnaski and Director Vasudev, not hearing from the rest of the board yet. But the direction on this could be, the action can be, hey, move forward with design, move forward with community engagement. Leave the parking structure out of it for now, right? And you know what? The bridge is a maybe, right? I hear you. The, the, I understand where you're coming from and you and I had a little, a chance to speak about this following the meeting, Director Vasudev, right? But one, the parking, and it is semantics and I recognize this, right? But we're not building a parking garage to add more parking spaces. We're trying to offer replacement parking so that we do not walk backwards, right? The last thing we want to do is over a decade worth of work and partnership with the city around those residential parking permits, right? And then find ourselves back in the same place where we once bore before. And in regards to the bridge, I'm not married to it, right? It, but keeping in mind, the bridge is really designed to ensure student safety with minimal operating costs as well, right? So it's, it's, it's a conversation that can be further had. It wouldn't impede upon the, the bikeway, the, the bike lane, the protected bike lane that's there, it wouldn't impede. You know, there's restrictions that we have to follow just around height clearances and whatnot to allow for trucks, for fire trucks, et cetera. So it, it, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I, I get your concern, right? And it's something that will all be part of that community engagement, but also those meetings that are to come with the city.
Okay, thank you so much. Director Shnaski has a question and then Vice President Korn.
Is it okay, Jed? Director Korn, Vice President Korn? Just really quickly, just following up on that, I think that, John, you made a good point. It's like we, the previous project that we, that we pulled was building a parking garage that was actually expanding the number of spaces available for parking for our staff. And that was pulled with community input and for good reason. But I, I think that there is a very big distinction between this proposal and that proposal. And, and so I just want to point that out. And then the other thing is I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, I really support exploring. I think that it's fine to explore putting the tennis courts on top of any building we build. But I also would like to understand the costs associated with further putting those tennis courts at Mollering and utilizing that space a little bit better. Again, I, I really appreciate preserving that green space along Milvia for the community there and the creativity of the dog park area. But especially the girls tennis team, we, we heard a little bit from some of the tennis players. But I know that the girls tennis team right now is practicing on two different sets of courts every week. And then their matches are on a different court. There's no place to store any of their equipment. They have had tons of overturn of the coaches on, of that team. And it just, it seems to me that it really is in our best interest to move forward with that as quickly as possible if it's viable and we can use the current bond funds to do so. So I,
And we're going to touch on that a little bit later too, just so you know.
Okay, I, I would like to explore that. And I also, as you know, and I've mentioned at facility subcommittee with Anna, I have concerns about the bridge. So thank you. I'll hand it over to Vice President Korn.
Thank you to all of the great questions that both of you already asked. You asked many of the things that I was already going to raise. I just have one additional question about parking. In this conversation, when we were talking about the parking permits, it was sort of implied that the city has given BUSD all of those parking permits that are now being used by Berkeley High teachers and staff. But didn't Berkeley High teachers and staff actually have to pay for their own?
Yeah, they gave us the authority to purchase them, which previously, because of the zone that it's in of the downtown business district, Berkeley High was actually always excluded. So yeah, I believe the, the current cost in, I don't know if Principal Daygoza is still on right now, but I, if I remember correctly, the, the cost was right about 13,000 a year for the parking permits.
But I believe this year, teachers paid for it themselves.
Yeah, the first year there was a benevolent donor who helped because the, the permits were, everything was passed with the city council, long past budget development. And it was, you know, it was coming up into the summer and it was like, okay, great, we're going to get these permits. And how do we fund it, right? Because there was absolute concern around going to staff that late and so on and so forth. So we did reach out and, and a benevolent donor had, had offered to help that first year with us with those funds.
Great. So I just raised that to kind of stamp the need to continue these negotiations with the city in the hopes that we can work together to solve these parking issues that are, that are really real for many of our staff who are commuting from far away to serve our kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just reflecting what Vice President Korn said, I do agree as well of the importance of the parking issue and engaging with the city to ensure that there's a partnership to, to figure out, you know, whether it be the permits and/or the spots in the existing parking spots. But I also understand as Director Shnaski noted that we do need parking availability for our teachers and staff. They, they, they drive in. So I do want to, are there any other questions? We're going to let the presentation move on because we're, we still have more. Okay, great. If you could proceed, that'd be great. Thank you.
Great. Next slide.
Having a temporary technical issue. Let me pull up this next slide.
Apologies, my laptop, like, hold on just a second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charis.
Yeah.
Ms. Charis, I believe if you escape out of presentation slideshow mode and then go back into it, you should be able to work through that.
Thank you. Let me try that. There we go.
Okay, so the next piece of it is our Measure G budget update. But it also plays to Director Shnaski's question around doing Mollering Field sooner than later, if Mollering Field is where the decision lands. And the, really, the, the short answer of that is maybe. There's still a lot of variables and unknowns right now. Particularly, there's, there's three that are really sort of the biggest ones that we have to think about. We still don't have a final guaranteed maximum price or GMP for Longfellow. We anticipate having that early next year. We should be out of DSA finally with everything the end of this year. So that right there is an unknown because while we know what we're trending towards, what we don't know is the final DSA comments and those DSA comments will impact schedule as well as pricing. We also don't know final GMP for the theater. We know that the theater right now is trending at about total project cost at about 130 million. That theater, again, just to remind everybody, because we hear that and there's a little bit of sticker shock, right? When we look at all of the buildings across BUSD, that theater had the greatest seismic risk and was actually in the greatest need of modernization just from a safety standpoint, besides for usability. Why is it up to 130? It's predominantly driven by all of the seismic factors that have to be done that we continue to find as we go through and finalize the design on that project. And then lastly is state income and state funding. So we qualify for the SFP or we participate in SFP, the School Facilities Program under the state, which is, they call it a 50% match. It's usually about 25, 30%. Under that state facility program, we know that we are currently conceptually approved for 43 million and change for the theater and roughly for another 30 million is what's anticipated just for Longfellow. But there's several steps that have to happen in that. One is you have your conceptual approval with the Office of Public School Construction. Then you actually move to DSA concurrence and approval of that. Then you have to wait for the State Allocation Board to put you, to, to give you your disbursement. Once you make the workload list, it's not a question of if you're going to get the funds, then it becomes a question of when. And that's really determined based upon when the state sells their bonds. Now, we can predict when that is and we have predicted when that is, just based on their trends and how they're moving their bonds. But what I don't want to do is say, okay, the decision is to put the tennis courts here or wherever it is. But, and we're going to have more money in a year and a half, let's build it. And then there's a delay with state funding because then we're writing checks that we can't cash, right? So the, the, the short answer is, yeah, we'll move it forward. But we can't say for sure that when we'll move it forward because there's these three factors that are really playing into that. So and what you see here is just sort of the cash flow and how we figure out, because when, and I've talked about this to the board of the past, but when we, just because we authorized, the community authorized $380 million of general obligation bonds in 2020, we don't put $380 million in the bank. When we sell those bonds is very strategic, not only as to when we need the money, but it also has to do with doing everything we can to keep the tax base as low as we can. Because ultimately, it's the property owners that are paying that back. Next slide. So on that, actually, do we have any questions around the, the cash flow and whether or not we can make those adjustments, right? Or make those commitments right now or why? Or should I move to the next part of the presentation?
Board members, any questions? I'm not seeing any. You proceed, please.
Okay, next slide. So this last one is around the, what we're calling the BHSSD, SDC facility. And what this is, is there was a need that's been communicated by our superintendent, our ed services team, as well as our special ed team, to really be able to add greater capacity at the high school to serve some of, some of our special ed students. Currently, we don't have the space to actually serve them. And a lot of times the space that we have is not necessarily appropriate. So when we, when we started the programming on this, we started with the why and what came out of ed services, but particularly special ed was, we needed to offer something that was more structured, but also restrictive than a CEC class, but less restrictive than a non-public school. We also needed to help students, and I, I underline this because it's so important, but create a facility where it's not only the education, but it's also the facility that helps students transition back to general ed classes. So if you take them and you, if you silo our students outside of the high school, it does become a little bit harder, like if you were to put them into an NPS to transition back later. Whereas this is sort of being thought about and designed of how do we create sort of a satellite campus within the campus? And then be able to work, that the special ed team is able to work to transition these students back to general ed classes when they're ready. So we talked about just the different design features. Once we understood the programming needs, what those core components look like to really build out a proper facility and then instructional design, and that's what you see here. So what we came up with, if you move to the next slide, please, is where we used to house the portables in the athletic plaza behind the stadium. We housed portables there for a few years while we were under construction for the community theater. That's actually not only the ideal space, but it's the only space on the campus where we can build this without taking away the one area of campus green that we have that basically serves 3,200 students, which is the quad outside the C building. The benefit of this is the athletics plaza is relatively a quiet space with little activity during the school day. Now, after the school day, that's not the case. That area is absolutely bustling with activity. But during the day, it is probably one of the more quiet spaces, if not the quietest space on the campus. So next slide. So what we looked at, based on the programming needs from those meetings, were there was a need for two classrooms. There was also a need for some independent study space. There's a need for counseling offices to support this, our, our students. There is a need for, what you see in green towards the left is a large gender neutral bank of restrooms. But then also what our special ed team was calling some anxiety pods, some sensory pod areas where students who had high anxiety could go to be able to come down and not necessarily have to leave for the school day. Additionally, there's not only a desire, but a need for outdoor space for us, for all of the classrooms, but also some secluded counseling outdoor space. So that's what you see here on the floor plan. Next slide. These are just, and I put a few slides together of renderings of what we could potentially do here for the cost that I am proposing. Next slide. And this is the exterior of the building as well as what those courtyards would look like. And I think there might be one more slide. I don't remember. I'm sorry. Next slide. Yeah. So what we're proposing to do here is actually use a product called Cube, which these are not portables. They're, they're modular, but where they stand apart from all other modular buildings, most modular buildings are trucked on site and put together on site. These are actually stick-built buildings. So they're built the same way as all other buildings on the campus, but some sections actually come modular. And by doing this, we can actually keep our costs low. And right now, the total anticipated project cost for this SDC facility, as we show on, there's an attachment to the presentation, our updated budget sheet is right about 6 million to build out this facility. So with that, Ms. Charis, if you want to stop presenting, we can definitely take some questions.
Thank you. Board members, if you've got questions? Thank you. And so I've got a quick question. Where, where the funds for the 6 million, they would come from, just so everybody understands, where would they come from?
They'd come from our existing funding in Measure G. Because what we would be doing is that 49.7 that we had earmarked under the, the attachment, which is the budget update. Some of the changes is like the 49.7, there was a little bit of money, I don't recall the amount, I'm sorry, that was already allocated to the CNE project, right? That, that we've already spent on the initial designs. It would be allocating the design dollars for the CNE project as a whole. It would be allocating the dollars here and it would also be used to really offset what was being advanced funded for the state and what we have to continue to fund until we get state funds coming back in. So it would come out of Measure G.
Okay, great. Thank you. I mean, my feeling is that, you know, having a, you know, whatever you want to call it, SDC or a learning center, a, a space that provides a further variety or scope of individualized education for inclusivity is a, I think it's something that is important to the district and may support our sped programming to provide more flexibility. To have that separate building at $6 million seems like a very reasonable value. But, you know, I think it may, may involve a little bit more conversation. But it's a, it's a great, to me, it's a very interesting start. Director Shnaski and then Vice President Korn.
Yeah, I'm really excited to explore that possibility too. Director Chang's question actually prompted me to just want to make a quick comment. And that is, I think that it can be confusing to the public in general when we're talking about these kinds of dollars and these kinds of allocations, while at the same time talking about like budget balancing solutions and difficulties meeting the needs of our labor partners and their, and their contractual requests. So I just want to emphasize that this is a different funding stream that's very restricted. So all of these construction projects are, you know, bond measure dollars that are specifically earmarked for these types of projects and can't be used for any of those other things. So it just prompted me to say that because we had a couple of public comments that I think confused those resource is a little bit. And I I think it's important to just emphasize that again and again.
I appreciate that because I've talked about that so much that I don't even think to sort of start with that. And that's important. You know, we've done, we we are super restricted with how we can spend these dollars, right? This is this is a building fund that it's used for just that. We've done the projects to actually upgrade our efficiencies and things like that. The bill is what it is, right? We only have so much of a footprint to offset the PG and E bill any further. So we've done a lot of those, but ultimately, yeah, we cannot use this money when we talk about contract negotiations or for any other funding other than building. So thank you for that.
That's super important. That's legally binding based on the measures. Vice President Corn?
Yeah, I it's, I think this is a really exciting idea. And it's raising a bunch of sort of programmatic questions for me, which maybe you're not exactly the right person to to answer them. But I'm, well, first, I'm wondering how many students would be would be served by these two classrooms. Second, I'm just sort of wondering about flexibility of the space and whether it would just be two self-contained classes of students who would be served. Or whether there might be other students who would have access to those spaces as needed during the day, to your point actually about, like, sometimes students with high anxiety need a place to de-escalate. And to President Chang's point about more of a learning center model. Like, I'm wondering how we might be able to use that space more flexibly to serve needs of many different students. And then the third question that's coming up for me is whether having a space like this would enable programming that would help us to bring back students who are currently going to non-public schools or being served in other settings.
The third question that you had is one of the things that really sparked my curiosity and why we started looking at this, right, is can we bring those students back to BUSD? The first two questions, while I think I can answer them, it's it's not my bailiwick, right? So I'm I'm definitely gonna defer to Superintendent Ford Morthell or Associate Superintendent Hugendike to help answer those questions. They, we did talk about different models during programming, but I'm gonna pass to them.
Yeah, good evening again. So in those conversations, what we were looking at is some variation of a of more like an SDC type class for the high school. Because we don't really have anything between Berkeley High and then NPS. I think what was helpful in the conversations that we had with John and his team was how space might be used to be more flexible. So we talked about spaces that would enable counselors to meet individually with students, to have small groups. So I think in, you know, and that we didn't want it to be a space that felt like it was totally isolated from the rest of the campus. But how do we address some of the bigger concerns that we have been hearing from families at Berkeley High is too big for some of the students that have specific needs in a way that would also allow them to be part of the broader Berkeley High community?
That's why I defer it to Jill. Definitely said more eloquently than I can explain it.
Yeah, thank you to both of you. Are there any other comments or questions? Just for the board here. Just as Director Shnaski previously asked, and we want to make sure you understand what that ask is.
Yeah. Yeah. So so really, I think based on the feedback that I've gotten from the board, I would ask for action on the following. I would ask for action on updating our Measure G budget sheet as as it was submitted. I would ask for action on moving forward with a contract around this SDC facility or whatever we're, we, you know, we want to call that. And then I would also ask for action around allocating the money that we're asking for for design around the C and E project with the caveats that the parking is still gonna, the parking and the bridge are still gonna continue to be studied. And we'll start that work while we're studying that and working with the community as well as our city partners. And same with Mollering Field that will continue to engage with our community, which is really just, it's about another seven months prior to actually pulling the the trigger on the design portion of that. So that'll allow us also to sort of get in the queue with our architects as far as when they can start planning their staff to do the appropriate design work.
Okay, everybody understand the three kind of pieces here? Any any questions about those three pieces? I know there's a lot going on here.
Oh, sorry, Director Corn. I was gonna say, just for specificity, that the exploration of the parking lot and the bridge, that that's gonna happen at the two by two, that it's important to engage. My direction is that it's important to engage with city partners, not just the community.
Yeah, no, I thought I said city as well, if I did. It it's community and city partners.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Just to be very specific, we're talking about the two by two. Putting them in a two by two as a formal committee to have that engagement. Any other questions or comments on the ask?
And John, as part of that, you're gonna explore the the tennis court, the possibility of the tennis courts being on top of the building as well as the cost associated with the Mollering Field upgrades.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So we'll we'll continue to explore all that. And that's why we wouldn't hit design of the athletics piece of this till much till another seven months or so.
Great. And as part of that, I'd love to understand a timeline for that project, you know, the the two options and the potential timeline.
Sure.
But otherwise, I I'll make the motion.
Please, please do proceed. Would you like to make the motion, Director Shnaski?
I just did. I'll second.
Oh, you just moved it. I'm accustomed to people stating it out very specifically. That's cool. I think we heard a lot of it. It's been moved first by Director Shnaski. Second, then by Director Vasudev. I think we have to do a roll call because we're online.
Correct. Student Director Aradam?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Shnaski?
Yes.
Vice President Corn?
Yes.
President Chang?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
So thank you. And what I will say also, because it has come up in conversations around the SDC facility or the Learning Center, or, you know, when can we potentially turn this? And by, you know, I I wanted to point this out earlier. But by doing this as what's considered to be a pre-checked DSA modular, we still have to go to DSA, but it's a lot easier. And with modular construction, there's no way I can actually turn this for August of twenty six, but it is very possible that we can actually have a ribbon cutting around January of twenty seven, right? So no guarantees yet. We have to start contract, full-on contract negotiations. But this is something that unlike most of our DSA projects, that that last facility is something that we should be able to move relatively quickly.
Okay, that's great to know. Thank you so much. And thanks for working to, you know, be innovative and and managing the different space and needs, concerns in a flexible manner. Okay, so we are at extended public comment. I'm gonna pull up my thing here to see who we have for public comment. There seems to be fifty two people online. Is that possible still? And we have one, we have two, Lindsay Nofelt and Jane Logan, who have their hands raised. Do you have anybody else here? Hands raised? I don't see anybody. And of the two, the two are, I'm assuming they're not students. They haven't stated. So Lindsay, you just, oh, she's being elevated. Lindsay is coming up.
Hi, Board members. Thank you very much for the robust discussions. I just have one really quick question. I'm a voting member on DCQ, the Disability Equity, and I forget what the acronym really stands for, but it's something like that. And this this special day building, the special day classroom, seems to be an important part of something that this committee would be interested in understanding and knowing about and engaging on. And this board presentation was the first we've heard of it. So I just want to apply that as something that in the future, I think it would be nice to use our committees for this kind of thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Next sign up is Jane Logan. Jane should be elevated now.
Sorry, I think I'm here now. As a tennis parent, I just wanted to reemphasize the timing of the decisions. And I know the need for engagement with the Mollering Field project, but we've looked at, I think, almost six full generations of tennis players that have been homeless. And so the longer it takes to make a decision and to decide how to move forward, the more players are displaced in their tennis careers at Berkeley High. So I'd just like to encourage the board to look at how they can move more quickly on that piece of the project. And there is a potential, as one of the other speakers said, for private public participation and funding for the courts themselves. USTA is very interested in helping to support urban courts and has worked with a lot of other districts on these types of projects. And so I'm sure they'd like to engage if funding is an issue.
Thank you. Let's see, I don't see any other speakers online. Unless I've missed something. Do board members have extended comments? I do not. So I think we are adjourned. Thank you so much for a great conversation and pivoting online today, too, successfully. Bye bye.